Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins?
Here.
Clem Mosleski? Mike Richman?
Here.
Jim Gallantino?
Here.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Here.
Mike Cristaldi?
Here.
Craig Pomisano?
Here.
David Carter?
Here.
Despenahess?
Here.
Remy Pelosi? Joe D. Gerolimo?
Here.
Rich Patterson?
Here. This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. Like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Who make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. We do this now? I'd like to hear a nomination for a solicitor to replace Stan Bergman for the remainder of 217.
Make a motion.
I'll second him.
Who you're nominating?
Who are you making the... Who are you nominating?
Leo.
Got it. A second?
A second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Like to hear a motion for the approval of decisions and resolutions, number 20, 2017, Frank and Crosetta Paglioso. Number 21, 2017, Pirano Builders LLC. Number 22, 2017, Carmen and Karen Roan. Number 23, 2017, George and Carol Vinci. Number 24, 2017, Henry Israele. Number 25, 2017, Craig and Allison Schwartz.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. First case is 100 South Vendome LLC, 100 South Vendome Avenue, Block 23, Lot 1, in the S-40 district to grant a C variance for density in front yard and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McLarnin?
Before we begin...
One moment.
Will you make the notice about the two being...
Yeah, 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 I will. For this particular case, Mrs. Guber Nolte is recusing herself and cases number 11 and 12, Gregory and Suzanne Mays, 8007 Lagoon Drive, and Margate Burger LLC, 7903 Ventnor Avenue. Both of those cases have been pulled in case anyone's here from the audience for those cases. It's number 11 and 12 on the agenda. Mr. McLarnin?
Thank you, board chairman, board members.
Roger needs to be sworn in.
Oh, yeah.
Please raise your right hand. Can you state your name for the record?
Roger D. McLarnin?
Mr. McLarnin, you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification on the agenda. It's not a C variance for... Not for density, but for fence in the front yard. Our report is dated May 22, 2017, in regard to 100 South Vendome Avenue LLC. Addresses are the same. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the City of Margate in order to construct a new six-foot-high fence within a front yard for a corner lot. The area of the fence would encompass a pool and extend out to the front yard where fences are prohibited. The pool equipment is not clearly shown on the survey and a variance may be required for if it does not meet the rear or side yard setback requirements. So the variance required is a fence located within a front yard, which is a C variance, whereas no fences are permitted within a front yard, and one is being proposed. My commentary is follows. The prevailing building setback was previously determined to be 10.7 feet along Atlantic Avenue based on one structure with the minimum setback being no less than five feet. The applicant shall provide testimony that all roof pitches meet or exceed the 512 roof pitch. This is brought... Raised to my attention by a concerned citizen. Next door, due south, is an egress driveway for the multi-unit, multifamily dwelling. The proposed fence will have a negative impact on the sightlines for entering the public sidewalk area from the property itself. We'll need testimonies to support that the fence will not encroach in that site triangle. Apparently, there are two designated parking spaces for the multi-unit dwelling, partially within the public right-of-way. That's just a general comment. The pool equipment location needs to be identified and a variance for this location may be required for setbacks. Pedestrian safety will be negatively impacted with any fence in the front yard setback. Recommendations are as follows. In my... The variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy C1 and C2 criteria where appropriate, including positive and negative criteria components. And my... If any approval was granted, a site triangle should be provided on approved plans for a 40 mile an hour design speed that provides adequate site distances and needs to be confirmed by an engineer for the applicant. The existing driveway along Atlantic Avenue should be removed as another condition of any approval. Proof of any benefits outweighing any detriments needs to be provided. And that concludes my report at this time. I reserve the right to comment further.
Good evening. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant. So we have a problem. And a pool was installed in a location that in and of itself does not require a variance. Pool was installed by a pool company on behalf of experienced builders. And looking at the board now, you're looking at me saying, "How did this happen?" And there really is no good answer except it happened. The pool is almost directly on the property line. There is enough room... I'm sorry, not the property line, the setback line. There is enough room if the fence were installed per code by right to do this. What we have here, unfortunately, is a choice between doing that and creating a public safety, health, and welfare problem based upon somebody potentially hopping a fence and falling directly into the pool on a sheer drop versus giving a small amount. And we've got pictures that we submitted, a small amount of leeway on a fence, which would be an open-slatted fence to allow a bit of ingress and egress in and around the pool and just enough room so that if somebody is walking home from the greenhouse, which is not too far or any other establishment, maybe had a drink or two too many, and was... Let's go in the pool. I know there's a pool there. Hops the fence, there could be a drowning. We think that the problem that exists, and Anthony Almeida is here on behalf of contractor that built the pool... Built the house where the pool is installed. And it's a... It's a problem we can't fix right now unless we either put the fence directly on the line, which I think, and I think Mr. Almeida will testify, and I think you ladies and gentlemen will hopefully agree, will solve potential problem of drowning or someone falling in versus a small setback. And I mean, small. Right now, we've got pictures in front of you that are a four-and-a-half-foot-wide fence. When I submit that with this open-slatted, four-and-a-half-foot-wide fence, there would be no negative impact on the neighbors or along people walking on Atlantic Avenue. I am going to ask Mr. Almeida to testify as to how this happened because we do acknowledge it's a problem. We're not trying to push this problem off onto anybody else, but it's a problem that exists and we're trying to deal with it as best we can.
Can you please raise your right hand and state your name and business address, please?
Anthony Almeida.
Can you spell that?
A-L-M-E-I-D-A.
Your business address?
Is 8601 Ventnor Avenue, Margate.
And you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Anthony, you heard what I had to say as a preliminary statement. Please explain to the board how this happened and what we're trying to do to fix.
Who's he here on behalf of?
He's the builder, Bayfront Custom House.
Got it.
He's on behalf of the property owner, 100 South Vendome LLC.
Thank you. Unfortunately, it happened because I made a mistake. I... There's nothing more to say that there's two setbacks, front yard setbacks on the corner. So when I maneuvered the pool to make it more usable the way that it was put, I never took in consideration the side yard setback on the Atlantic Avenue side. There's nothing more than that. It wasn't premeditated. I put it in a year and a half ago. It was just an honest mistake. And I go to Roger's office, McLarnin, and I asked him about it. And he said, "No, you have a... You have a front yard setback issue there." He says, "I can't do anything for you," which he was right. So that's why I'm here today. I don't want to sit here and tell you something that's not true. And it's truly a mistake on my behalf. I built plenty, plenty homes in Margate, and I messed up. And it isn't like, you know, I put it in a year and a half ago and we stopped building that particular home because I had so many clients that had deliver houses. So it should have been addressed a long time ago, but the house stopped construction at that point because I had to deliver homes. So here I get this house ready to go back. I'm getting ready to put fences, as-built, so forth and so on. And you see, it's a problem. And that's how I'm here today. And it's nothing more than that.
Could you tell me how it's any more of a problem than there's no setback between the house and if somebody could have a drink and fall off that balcony into the pool just as easily as coming over?
Excuse me, Mr. Pat... I don't know what you... I didn't understand what you said. Can you start over?
You got a pool... You got a fence that's going to be directly against the pool.
That's right.
You have a house that's directly against the pool. They're both... If one's a catastrophic situation, the other's a catastrophic situation. Was that a mistake, too?
Well, one is a deck on the other side, if that's what you're referring to, because that goes right against the house with a handrail. And that's a common... That's very common in Margate.
It's not common to have a pool flush against a house. There may be some, but it's certainly not common.
Well, I built... I built a few that I've had that identical application. I've never built one that you don't have... One that you can walk around, at least the pole horseshoe-wise. You're only able to walk around this particular pool in two different areas. It's really a danger situation at this point. In my opinion, I made the mistake and I have to own it. But the actual... Everybody, I'm sure, went there at this point. You can see that the garage... There's a lot going on on a small property there. There's not a whole lot of decking. You have a little bit in front of the garage. You have some down the other sidewoods, on the condominium side, and then you don't have anything. It's just... It's just a very tight, you know? Should... Could the pool... Should have been smaller? Absolutely. There's things that should have been done before I got here? Absolutely. But I'm here. Thank you.
Was it your intent when the pool was put in to wait until tonight to try to fix this problem as an after-the-fact variance?
Absolutely not.
Had you known that this was a problem prior to putting the pool in, would you have moved it over or just made it smaller than it is now?
Absolutely.
How many houses have you built in Margate?
Forty.
And you didn't know this was a problem?
Listen, it was a mistake, Mr. Patterson. That's all I can say. I know it was a problem after the fact.
Your attorney's bringing something up, and I want to ask a follow-up question.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, there's nothing more to say than that. Thank you.
Was... Anthony, was the pool on the original architectural plans?
Yes. That's eyes and everything.
And the architect did not flag it?
So again, complete accountability. He... I moved the pool backwards, back to where that is, thinking that I had some side yard setback because he had it almost against the garage, which almost seemed ridiculous. He almost couldn't even open the doors.
So the original plan is not what it is now?
No. It had it three foot towards the garage itself, and it just didn't make any sense to even where it was originally located because there are some... Sure there are... Could there have been things?
Then you need to check with your architect when you're going to move something because he put it there because he already knew about the setback.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Collins?
I got a question. Anne, over here. Can I mark this as A1?
Sure.
This is... This came in a packet. So the fence that's up there now, the blue... You have a copy of this?
Yeah.
Yep.
The construction fence?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the pool will come up to the sidewalk like it's projected on... As in the blue, or will go to somewhat off the sidewalk?
So... So, yeah, it's probably going to be half...
Yeah, it's the fence.
Less than half of that, Jim. That's just for safety because the pool is filled at this point.
So where... Where in that blue fence, this blue area, would you say your fence is going to come out?
It's four and... So if you... Let's just say from the corner of the house?
Uh-huh.
Where the water table is?
Sure.
So that... So the water... The water edge is one foot in off the coping.
Is that what you're asking for?
That's what I'm asking for.
Right there.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Because it wasn't... It looked like it was coming all the way out to the sidewalk. I just didn't want to get the impression that...
No. Mr. Collins, that's exactly what I'm asking.
So what you Collins pointed out...
Section here that you have, which shows it back past the sidewalk of the neighboring property?
That's correct. So...
Is what you're asking for tonight?
That's four feet, Mr. Collins, from the setback line, and that is the current application. Just to point out, initially, there was an application filed that showed the fence to be closer to the sidewalk. That application had been amended and thinking that it would be more reasonable to go in with a much smaller fence. Just enough to walk around, not enough to put anything in there, maybe except for some plantings. But the current application is only, as Mr. Collins pointed out, for what's shown on the first page of the color pictures. Anthony took these today. So this is as... It stands now just as a demonstration of what it will look like. And, you know, obviously, we would work with the board on any open slat if that's a better idea, whether it was iron or vinyl.
Eric, that's... That's my next question to you because when I was there today, I see, and you can see in this picture, that Parking Space 33 is right next to... And that car is going to project three-quarters of the way past the fence. So even though... I mean, you're not really interfering with the driveway because the driveway is another 10 feet up. I think that this is a safety hazard happening in an open fence because you have all those car exhausts when they're sitting there parked in the unit.
You know, at this point, Mr. Collins, we would really be at the mercy of the board. You know, if the board says you've got to put in an iron-open fence, we will do that. If the board says we prefer you to stick with an opaque vinyl fence, you know, there's been a mistake made, and I think Mr. Almeida stated that it's unfortunate. And worst-case scenario, we will put a fence right along the edge of the coping, and that's what we'll have to deal with because that's obviously by right, but we're trying to avoid that to keep it as safe as possible. But also by giving, you know, just enough space to make it palatable if someone needs to walk around on that side for any other reason.
Mr. Goldstein, the... It looks like the crushed stone goes another four feet past the fence. What's that going to be?
That's just mulch, Mr. Patterson, because the water runoff, we just wanted to keep it... That will be grass, right, Anthony? Yeah, yeah.
So because the pool is full of water right now, Mr. Pat... All I did is create a berm so as the water sheds off, all that mulch is, and all the debris isn't going back into the water or the pool at this point. So what that would actually be would be...
That snow will go away?
That would be grass. Thank you.
I have a question here. On the... On the house side, where the... Where the pool goes almost under the house, there's no... There's no space at all for anybody to walk there, correct?
Correct.
Right. And the other side looks like approximately seven feet. And on one side also has six feet, correct?
That's correct.
Seven foot on one by the garage.
On the garage.
Six feet coming the other way. What will four feet give you?
So what the...
Won't be room for a chair, actually.
Absolutely not. Cleaning the pool, access around it, any invented safety...
Would two feet be enough for that? You have one foot of coping.
Well, let's just say this. Great question. I... Two foot would be fine. Would I prefer three for comfort-wise? I mean, if you ask me, if I had to go back a little further...
My reason is you're not going to put a chair...
No. I'm not looking to get any more space to put a chair or a table. Strictly clean the pool, safety reasons, sellable reasons, you know?
Okay.
Craig, I would just...
Is the house sold?
I would just say that...
Mr. Patterson, it's not...
Two feet is not enough for safety. Not if you have kids and stuff. They could... They could... Yeah, that's two feet.
I don't agree with that.
I have a pool.
I don't agree.
I'm telling you, at least three to four feet you need there. At two feet, it's going to hurt.
They're not going to be on that side of the pool.
One person at a time, please.
They're not going to be on that side of the pool.
Mr. Pomisano, I have two-and-a-half feet at one end of my pool. It's easy to clean it, and it's easy to get around.
You have two-and-a-half feet?
Yes.
There you go.
Any other questions?
That's really it. You know, it's... This is a situation that unfortunately was created, and I have to applaud Mr. Almeida. I know a lot of people come in and they say, "I didn't know. I couldn't have known this. Someone else told me. I called City Hall. I spoke to an unnamed anonymous individual. They just said to do it." That's not the case at all. He made a mistake, a big mistake, and as the general contractor for the project, he has to own that mistake, which he has. And I think we're not attempting to minimize the problem here. And clearly, it's on the record that we acknowledge it is a big problem. But the question then becomes to you people, what is the best solution? Is it creating a worse problem by having the fence go straight down the side setback line, potentially causing some catastrophic drowning or other water hazard incident in the future? Or giving just enough to make the property as safe as possible while at the same time not rewarding this mistake? And that's where we are.
Eric, I'd really like to see a solid four foot and maybe a... Or a five foot and then a lattice at the top. I don't agree with this... This application here is not going to work.
Mr. Gallantino, if the board grants us any relief, we will abide by whatever conditions you put on.
I agree with Jimmy.
Eric, I have a question, and Anthony. The survey shows a 10.7-foot setback to the building. As you go further towards Longport, it looks like the pool at an angle will sticks further out than a 10.7. Is there any testimony that the... No portion of the pool is in that front yard setback?
I mean, the survey from Mr. Kelling is...
And I'm scaling it out to less than 10.7.
Roger, you're an engineer, so if you're... If you're scaling that out right now, that there's a portion of the water's edge that might be in that setback?
The physical part of the pool. I mean, I'm just raising a point...
You're talking about the water's edge or the coping?
The coping, that's...
Yeah. So I am aware that the coping is actually in the setback a few inches on the one corner. But the water itself isn't.
Okay.
I am aware of that. When we ran a string line down, because that's on a bit of an angle, that property?
I suggest that if a variance is approved or granted tonight, that that be included in that?
What be included?
Portions of the pool itself, the physical pool itself.
As part of the variance?
Yes.
One other topic that had been raised earlier by Mr. McLarnin, just to address, was the issue of the roof pitch. Mr. Almeida has calculated the pitch. There's, I believe, an answer that Mr. McLarnin, you and I went back and forth a little bit, but Anthony, why don't you explain to us why there's the possible perception that the roof pitch is not 512?
Well, one... I don't know if anybody jumped up there, so it's very difficult to do 512 from the ground. I didn't. I didn't either. So what I did is we jumped up today after you left, Mr. Collins. So we pitched it, and it's actually a little over a 512 pitch. That's fine. So it may give you a little bit of an illusion because there's two small dormers where the rafters are real short. If when the rafter runs longer, it gives more of an illusion, as you would know, Mike. So the dormers are so short, it gives you look like it's a 412 pitch. So I actually had them go up there and I had them pitch it out, and it's a little over 512.
Okay. And the last question is, are you seeking relief for setback for the pool equipment?
No. So for the pool equipment... Thank you. The pool equipment is in the garage. It's not taking up a parking space. So we're... Obviously, it's encased in the garage. It is outside the setback, but it's my understanding, the interpretation is as long as it's soundproofed, if it's in a garage structure, then if it's not taking up a parking space, which this is not, we're not seeking that variance.
Okay. Is the pool equipment elevated to the...
It is.
11 feet or 12 feet?
It's not elevated 11 feet, but there's a 22... It's above flood elevation, but it's 22 feet.
That's what I mean. It's above the... Thank you.
But I know sometimes the pool equipment's going up in the rafter of the garage. This is actually about five feet off the ground.
As long as it's where the first floor is supposed to be.
And we're not taking up a parking space. There's 22 feet from the beginning of the garage to the front of the pool equipment.
The deck of the pool equipment was at my test level when I walked in the garage.
Well, Stumpy, you're not that tall. So what is the... So as far as the... What are we looking at here? How far are we going to come out? Are we coming out 30 inches? Or, you know, what do you...
Mr. Richmond, as I said...
Huh?
To the extent we're asking for the variance, the picture that Mr. Collins held up, this is four feet. So we're asking for four feet. To the extent that the board would like us to cut that in a little bit, we could cut it in. And as Mr. Patterson said, he's got room on his side of the pool, two and a half. You would like us to be in further and like us to have the five foot solid with the lattice top, certainly that's a condition we would abide by. So we're asking for four feet.
4.7, right?
What is... Does anybody have... Questions from the board of anything to say about that?
Yes, I do. Hey, Jimmy. Jim, Mr. Gallantino? If they were to put a three-foot deck over that end of the pool...
Repeat that question, please.
Which would give them the safety at that end.
Deck over the pool?
Deck over the pool. It's ground level. Not at 18 inches. You don't even need a permit for it.
Over the coping?
Over top of the coping, over the end of the pool. So when you put the fence where it belongs, not getting any variance for it. You're covering that end of the pool and you're getting, you know, what you want. I don't know if it... I don't... I don't care about the cleaning or anything else. I just need to know from James, is it legal?
I've never seen anything like that. Maybe down in Disney.
But I mean, it's...
I appreciate the creativity. I don't... That I don't appreciate.
I'm trying to... Yeah, I hear you. Don't sit on... Anybody else from the board?
Would you mind addressing, just from Roger's comments, I think we've danced around it, but why you think that pedestrian safety will be improved by having the fence rather than negatively impacted by losing that sightlines for the crawl?
And I think the reason for that is if you're walking along Atlantic Avenue, the fence is eight feet back from the sidewalk as proposed. Well, as potentially amended, it's seven feet back from the sidewalk as proposed. If the fence is directly against the pool and someone, again, were to have a drink somewhere and just be walking and decide to hop the fence, they are falling as a sheer drop right into the water. There could be a drowning. If somebody has to hop a fence and lands on mulch or concrete, they're going to have a headache, but they're likely not going to roll into the pool and then drown. So if the pool were over further, we wouldn't have this problem. This is the same amount of buffer we would normally have between the pool and the fence. I think it's just about ensuring that nobody does something dumb and then later hurts themselves badly because we didn't have a couple extra feet of room between the fence and the pool edge.
Eric, I really don't see anybody walking down the street and hopping over a six-foot fence in the daytime in Margate, into somebody's backyard. All of a sudden, they're in the pool. It's hard to... It's hard for me to believe.
I guess...
As far as the worrying of that, I just don't...
It is a concern. It is a concern. Look, anybody who buys the house, it's not sold.
It's very hard to get over a six-foot solid fencing also, I would think, even for you and me.
Well, I certainly couldn't do it, but I'm sure some of these kids, they're having a couple of drinks and they're feeling their oats and they come down and they're hoisting each other over, and next thing you know, it's front page news. But, look, I don't think it's likely to happen. I guess anything's possible.
Mr. Goldstein, I look at the other side of that same argument, and the closer the fence is to the sidewalk, the more appealing it is to a passerby. If it goes from the house directly back, it doesn't even look like anything's in there. It blends in with the house and there's not, there's less attraction to say what's behind that fence, let's jump over it, rather than a fence sticking out into the yard.
Yeah, I understand the opposite side of that same coin. I get it.
I have a question. What's going to go on the other side of the fence where that, is it going to be bushes out there?
We have a landscape plan?
So again, I'm not asking for any more coverage. I'll put grass.
No, but I'm saying on the outside of it, not on the inside. On the other side, there's going to be bushes across there.
So, no, grass. It's all, it's all grass.
No bushes across?
No bushes across there.
Now, if the board has a condition of the approval, would like to see more bushes, there'll be more bushes. You know, this is a case where we're really at the board's mercy. A mistake has been made. We're trying not to double down on that mistake, and that's why we're here, to try to fix the problem. So there's really not much more...
Anything else?
I just want to, I want to mention that by looking at the survey, with the Egress driveway next door, that the location of the fence indicated on the plan probably will not impose a danger to pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. I think the sight lines will be clear. Particularly, we just reduced the speed limit to 25. That would only benefit.
For clarification?
I'm sorry?
Eric, would you mind clarifying where we're at coming out? How much are you asking for at this stage before any recommendations or suggestions?
Okay. So the present application is for four and a half feet. The fence as shown is four feet. I know there's been some discussion around what is the minimum amount that would work, and I think Mr. Patterson said two and a half feet. Three feet would probably be the minimum we would like, but if it were two and a half feet, we're going to accept that. So the application's for four and a half feet. To the extent the board has a recommendation would like us to amend it to make it less intrusive into the setback, we'll abide by that. I know it has to be on us and it can't be a recommendation by the board, so I would say three feet, 36 inches from the setback line. And then the design of the fence would be a solid vinyl fence up to five feet with a lattice top to match what's already on the plan.
Is that a solid fence, you said?
Solid vinyl up to five feet and then lattice on top. Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Galantino? Okay.
But it, and it's coming out three feet?
Three feet.
Right.
Any other comments from the board? You done, Mr. Goldstein?
We rest unless the board has any additional questions.
When you come out three feet, is that from the coping?
No, it's from the pool edge. Well, it's from the, it's from the, Anthony, is it setback? It would be from the...
From the edge of the house, right?
Yeah, the edge of the house.
From the edge of the house, you want to come out through it?
Because the coping is slightly askew. There's a little bit of an angle where it bumps out. So it would be, Mr. Pomisano, three feet from the house edge into the allowable setback on Atlantic.
So it'll be a seven-foot setback?
It would be about a 7.7-foot setback, Mr. Manos. Because it's 10.7 from the house edge to the sidewalk.
Anything else from the board?
If you took that from the water's edge, it would hold the fence back a little bit. But I don't see it doing any good.
Anyone here from the public that would like to comment? Please come forward. Be sworn in, please.
Please raise your right hand, your name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Callahan, property manager for Ocean View. My office is 450 Tilton Road, Northfield.
And you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I came, I'm coming before you on behalf of the Ocean View condominium complex, which is the property that the alley is along this fence. They are satisfied with what the owner wants to do. However, we would like to see a convex mirror installed along that fence as part of the conditions for the acceptance of his variance in order to make the alley a little bit safer. We have applied to Captain Bergeron of your police department to eliminate the parking space that is just the Longport side of that alley. It hasn't taken place yet, but if you could facilitate that, that would also help us so that that's our exit. And that would make that space a little bit safer.
Do you have any objection, Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Public portions closed? What, someone else?
I'm Carol Christensen. I live at 100 South Osborne in Margate.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please raise your right hand and state your name again.
Carol Christensen. Is that my address?
Sure.
100 South Osborne.
And you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth?
I swear.
Nothing but the truth?
You know, just talking about people jumping over fences and things, I had my car stolen right out of the driveway underneath my bedroom window by three high school kids a few months ago, and they drove the car away. So kids do stuff. I'm not as sanguine as everybody else thinking people won't jump into a pool in the summer when young kids like that. There's a lot of car thefts and stuff, and, you know, it's a little concerning, but that's all.
Anyone else? Public portions closed? Any other comments or questions on the board? Would you phrase the motion?
Sure. We need a motion for sea variance relief to permit the fence to extend three feet from the building, which would essentially be a 7.7-foot setback on the property line, as well as a sea variance for a portion of the pool to extend into the setback. The conditions being that the applicant wants, that the fence will be a solid vinyl fence up to five feet with a lattice top and a convex mirror installed on the Longport side.
Motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Rich, before we go on, does the applicant have any objection to all of Roger's recommendations? They included as well?
Not at all.
Yeah, and that would be part of the motion.
Sure.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. I think with the adjustments that Anthony made tonight and the willingness to correct his errors, I don't see any negative impacts. The neighbors are not against it. I'm glad you're doing a solid fence because of the fumes from those cars. They're not going to be a good thing. And it's a beautiful house, well-designed and nicely built, so I wish you luck.
Clay Mazzaske?
As Eric said, this is a big problem. I think it needs a big solution. With due diligence on the part of the applicant, I think this whole thing could have been avoided. It's not the function of this board to correct other people's mistakes. I vote no on the motion.
Rich Patterson?
Well, first thing I look at is Roger's number six comment, pedestrian safety. This is our expert engineer saying pedestrian safety will be negatively impacted with any fence in the front yard setback. That's any fence. Now, realize this is Atlantic Avenue. There's no fences all along Atlantic Avenue, and you're now putting a fence on Atlantic Avenue. I still feel the fence closer to the sidewalk is more appealing to a high school kid or any kid to jump into the pool. So now the question is, if a kid does jump over the fence and falls into the water, is that better than falling and hitting his head on the cement and rolling into the water because there's only a couple of feet there? I, I listened to the applicant say he made a mistake. I look at a house that was designed, I look at a house that was designed, and this has been going on for a long time, as the applicant stated. It stated that the allowable fence could cause a catastrophe and we should grant you relief. I don't see how the pool is any safer because you have the same situation on the long side of the pool. I think this whole thing was designed wrong. I think people are trying to put pools in yards that are too small or making pools that are too big in small yards. I think it's the same situation against this house as against the front line, so I don't think we're making it any safer. I see no benefit to the city or the neighborhood, only relief to the builder. I see detriments. Putting a fence anywhere in the front yard along Atlantic Avenue, no matter how many feet you ask for it, is not in keeping with intent of the master plan. There was never any intention that there be any fences there. You block views and interfere with the access of your neighbors, and I vote no on this application.
Mike Cristaldi?
I'm in agreement with Rich. It's a, it's a mess, and I'm in the same business, and I create messes and I just swallow them. I don't want to see a fence out on Atlantic Avenue. I apologize. I don't have to apologize for it. I don't, I don't see that there's a reason that we should grant this because of a mistake. So I vote no.
Jim Galantino?
It's a penalty to have a corner lot. You have a corner lot, you have two front yard setbacks. You don't get, you got two yards you can't use. You're going to see a lot of conditions coming in front of the board where people don't have any use of one of their properties because they want to put a fence in. So you push the house back. I mean, not saying that Anthony put the pool too close to the house, which it's right up against it, but you're penalizing the homeowner for having a corner lot. So Roger and I have been talking about this. We've been trying to figure out how to make it a little bit easier for people with corner lots to get a fence or something into that setback, but I, I don't think it's that bad of a condition where you're creating a zone of three foot. Initially, I thought he was going to bump it all the way out to the sidewalk, and I was a dead no on that, but it's kind of fall, it's falling in line with the Vista, Lynn Callahan came in from Ocean Vista. She just represented the fact that she didn't have a problem with it. I don't see any other neighbors here complaining about it. I vote yes. I don't see any detriments. I think they're penalized.
Mike Crichman?
I think pushing the fence back so that it's only protruding three feet is a good compromise. I kind of agree with Jimmy. I don't really see a detriment. I don't, I understand what Rich is talking about with, you know, not really having a lot of fences sticking out on Atlantic Avenue, but I really don't see three feet as being a huge issue, so I'm going to vote yes.
Craig Pomisano?
Jim Galantino is right about corner lots. They are a problem. But so are big pools, pools that are too big for the lot. They're squeezed in there. They're just outrageous. One side of the pool, you can jump off the porch into the pool, goes under the deck. I agree with Rich Patterson on this and on the view from Atlantic Avenue and fences sticking out. To me, it looks like a crib. It looks like a playground out there. I have to vote no on this. I, it's a shame that they, the pool was put in in the wrong spot or brought out too far or that, problems with it, but I have to vote no on it.
The application does not pass. A vote of three in favor, four against.
Mr. Manos, to the extent the board would listen to an amendment to the application for the pool to be, fence to be one foot off of the property line...
It was turned down.
Just asking for the reconsideration based upon that design.
We can't do that.
You could technically hear reconsideration based upon a changed application. So Mr. Almeida has said that if the application was denied, he would pull it back so it's one foot into the setback. It's a call the board can legally make.
Well, my suggestion is, as Roger pointed out, the pool's not moving. There was a motion, it was seconded, it passed. In theory, he can attempt to come back later with a new application, and then it becomes whether it's significantly different than the first one, and then those legal issues can come up. But to take a vote now and then not get the result you want and then say, well, we'll pull it back just a foot and can we have another vote, I don't think would be appropriate.
Thank you. I think we'll have to be back or I'll talk to Mr. Almeida as to what he wants to do with the fence there, but it is a problem, so we'll do our best to fix it.
Eric, you still need a variance for the pool.
For the edge of the coping?
Unless your survey...
Is it the pool itself or is it the...
The physical location of the pool, the edge of the pool, unless your survey can make a determination that it's not within approaching at all.
All right. We'll take a look at that and obviously do something about the fence anyway, so if we come back, we'll address that issue at the same time.
That was, that was part of the motion. That was part of the motion, both variances.
All right. Thank you. Tonight, Happy Memorial Day, everybody.
Next case is Arnold Torren, 110 South Rumsen Avenue, Block 19, Lot 14, in the S-40 district to grant sea variance for third-floor deck and possibly others. Taxes and order are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
He was sworn in as his position.
Is that the way it's always been? Roger was sworn in.
He didn't have the credentials, but this one is.
Okay, Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, board members. Board Chairman, my report is dated May 22, 2017, in regard to applicant of Arnold Torren, 110 South Rumsen Avenue. Some background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances at the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling within the S-40 zoning district. The variance request is to construct a third-floor deck, which is not permitted in any, in this zone. So you can see my zoning chart, and I came up with another possible variance, but the applicant shall testify as to whether that's valid or not. So the variance is required or third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted and one is proposed, and garage roof, whereas a pitched roof, a 512 minimum is required and a mostly flat garage roof is proposed. My comments are as followed, and I already discussed some of these with the architects, so we don't need to discuss those, but the existing structure is to be demolished and replaced with a new structure. Third-floor decks and beach blocks are recommended in the master plan, but not yet changed in a zoning ordinance requiring a variance. No street trees are allowed within the public right of way on beach blocks. The proposed trees need to be removed. That's just a easy revision. The site shall be creative, back to front, meaning towards the street. All site runoff to be directed towards the street and not onto any neighbor. She P4 shows garage roof extending to the property line, and should be set back at least six inches from the property line to keep roof runoff on site. Again, Mr. Zacher, who will be sworn in and provide testimony, says that they are the gutters, and I'd be satisfied with that. The line of the second floor differs on the proposed site plan than that of the shown on the first-floor plan. Again, that will be clarified and testified by the applicant. The outside showers are required to have its own drainage and is not shown. By proper grading, I think the drainage will be remaining on site. And provide testimony to the HVC units being installed on the garage roof and how most of the garage roof is now flat or not flat. And my recommendations will be a condition of any approval. That concludes my report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren and members of the board. My name is Chris Valenson. I represent Arnold Torren, who's here this evening with Mr. Zacher. Recently purchased 110 South Rumsen Avenue for purposes of building a new home there. It's identified in the tax map as Lot 14 and Lot 19 in the S-40 district and the AE11 height zone, BFE zone. The proposal this evening, Don can address the other items that Mr. Zacher picked up with respect to kind of cleanup conditions. I think maybe variances. I think we can address those affirmatively that they're not variances. What we're here to speak of is the third-floor deck, which is the only variance called out in the application, and we believe the only variance that's going to be necessary.
Are you saying the garage roof isn't flat?
Don will address that. Mr. Patterson, I think he's going to say that it's not flat. It's a, it's an optical illusion if you look at the plan, but Don can talk to that. The third-floor deck, that's what he told me, Mike. The third-floor deck as proposed, as we, you guys have considered with respect to the master plan, reconsideration, is one that does not offend any of, anybody, any of the houses around there. It does not stick out nor protrude over the sidewalk. It is one that is compliant with the setbacks and set within the roof lines, just to give the occupants at the third floor a little bit of outside space to enjoy the view. Don, you can speak to that if you would. Don, you can speak to that if you would, talk about the variance and the other two items that we're here to talk about. Thank you. All set. Fire. You have a plan?
You raise your right hand, please. Your name and business address for the record.
My name is Donald Zachar. My business address is 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate, Suite 6.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Zachar, if you would, would you be a licensed architect in St. New Jersey?
I am, yes.
Chris, there's two microphones.
Don, can you grab that up, microphone?
Pushy attorney here.
Mr. Zachar, there's two microphones. Let me rephrase.
It's on.
Heston?
Don, you're a licensed architect in New Jersey?
I am.
And you prepared the plans for the Torrens? Is that the board's considering this evening?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Would you speak generally about the zoning of the tract, the house that you propose briefly, and then the variance that we seek? And if you could touch upon the conditions in Mr. McLaren's report that is brought up, that would be helpful.
Well, the proposed house is a three-story house, actually two and a half stories, in that the third floor is proposed to be no more than half the size of the second floor. The first floor consists of bedrooms and the entry stairs, the elevator. The second floor is the living area. It's an upside-down house, and the third, or the half-story, is devoted to the master suite. The deck in question is the one that looks towards the ocean, looks towards Rumson, and provides a view of the ocean.
If you would, would you identify that on the plan you're looking at, which is sheet PP1 of the plan submitted? Now looking at P1. Now, PP1.
PP1 will be exhibit A1, Chris.
PP1 is the bulk table in the site plan. The deck is clearly shown on the third floor plan, so let me roll with it. I'll take the easy parts first. The two street trees can easily be omitted. We're aware of the ordinance change prohibiting the installation of street trees. The diagram I've yellowed in this exhibit showing a platform above the garage roof to accommodate three air conditioning compressors and a generator is at a scale on this drawing that's more clearly shown to scale on the next two pages. Next two pages being P1 and P2. So the area yellowed here is in fact 99 square feet. The garage itself is 248 square feet. So the area that's flat to accommodate the equipment is less than half, well below half the size of the garage. Roger's comment was that it looked like it was way over half the size, but that was because of the undeveloped early design of the equipment on a small-scale site plan. While here on this page, we can usually install a French drain so that the shower has its own drainage system, 50 gallon drawn filled with stone, so that the water that would come from the drain of the shower would go into the French drain and percolate into the adjacent ground. The setback of the garage walls relative to the adjacent property lines is 18 inches. The roof overhang, shown by scale or by diagram, is 12 inches all around the garage, which allows for six inches for a five-inch gutter, so it leaves one inch clear. That gutter would not go over the property line. It would be within the 18-inch setback. And there's a note on the site plan, on the PP1, indicating that any of the drainage from the downspouts would come on the splash box, which would be directed away from the adjacent property lines, so that no water would be directed towards an adjacent neighbor's property.
That's that factor, Mr. McLaren?
I'll fire that, yes.
Drawing number P2, which is a second floor plan, shows the roof of the garage, which has a slope roof at 5 and 12 up to what would be a termination of the roof, dropping down to a flat portion to accommodate three compressors and a generator. Drawing P3 is the half-story plan, which shows the master suite, the adjacent closets, master bath, elevator, and steps down. It also shows the third floor proposed deck here, here, and here, which is embedded into the roof of the second floor to give us some privacy. It's not an open railing on three sides of that three-sided deck, but it's contained within the roof structure to give some privacy, so that there's only about one foot of railing above what in effect is a pent roof.
Don, is there an elevation you could show that on where that deck would appear on the facade?
Correct. The elevation is on exhibit P4, entitled "Front Elevation." It shows the cable railing with the last one foot of a three-foot height of railing from the deck surface. So the deck is essentially from here to here in terms of its width, so that the railing, the last one foot of the three feet, stops and then sloping away from it is a pent roof, so that the deck is not really visible to the extent that it's a three-foot-high open railing.
Mr. Zachar, the third floor deck meets or exceeds obviously all of the perimeter setback requirements?
It does. Now, this is, the right side elevation shows the side view of that railing peeking out from above the pent roof around it. If you can see that on the elevation, the horizontal lines representing the railing cable.
Mr. Zachar, in light of the, that's the other side elevation showing that the deck as well?
Shows the same configuration. There's a longer leg of the deck on the left side elevation, so there's more of the cable railing showing, but still two and a half feet or so of pent roof before it stops and becomes open rail.
Mr. Zachar, in light of the fact that the deck isn't closed within the pent roof from the second floor roof and meets all the setback requirements, do you think the deck can be approved by the board without having any substantial impairment on the zone plan or zoning ordinance?
I do. It's been proposed in the master plan, although not adopted yet by the Margate zoning, but hopefully it will. On the street, I think there's at least one, possibly another one across the street that has a third floor deck.
And can be granted without substantial detriments to the public good?
Yes, I believe that.
And the zoning ordinance?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Manos, I think the positive criteria can be addressed by the fact that there is a recommendation in the master plan for third floor decks on the beach block without pulling that out of testimony from Mr. Zachar. That's all I have, Mr. Patterson.
Anyone from the board?
Yeah. I found your optical illusion.
Thank you.
It's not an optical illusion.
Is it a hip roof on that garage or a gable end on it?
It's a truncated hip roof.
Mr. Zachar?
It's a hip roof where there is no platform, which fully is developed and goes up to a ridge, so a two or three sides, like a hip roof, but there's a bite taken out of that roof. Yeah, let me turn to that elevation. Unlogical ru-
Chris thought it was an optical illusion because of the painkillers he was taking from his foot.
Sorry. So here's the hip roof, 512 pitch, shown on the rear elevation, and then there's a screen here which shields the equipment.
Go back one sheet, Don.
I'm sorry?
Pull the top sheet down.
Doesn't matter.
And there, up top, no, no, up top, you show a gable roof. Right behind you on the garage door.
Other picture, other picture.
You're in the wrong picture.
Right there.
Here. That's a gable roof, 512, on the facade, on the door side of the street side of the garage. The rest of it is a hip, so it's a three-sided hip roof.
You're asking for two variances, though, right, Mr. Valenson?
If you were to refer to, Mike, whomever else, if you were to refer to drawing P2, which shows the roof plan, it shows the gable end right here, a ridge of the facade.
That should be a hip with the two.
This is a, this is a hip.
Would it be easier if we request a variance for the 512?
That's a hip.
Yes, I've seen.
These are valleys. These are valleys, see?
Mr. Valenson, I've seen them put in the side where they're hidden by the roof. It's cut into the side, but this is so large, it's taking up the whole top of the roof. So you're getting away from the whole picture of the pitched roof, so I would recommend that you ask for a variance for that, which is what Mr. McLaren wants.
Mr. Zachar, do you hear the comments of the board with respect to the size of the platform and the fact that the size of the platform is taking away a bit from your ability to maintain the pitch?
I hear the comments, but the area proposed for the platform is 99 square feet compared to 249 square feet of the overall garage area, so it's well below half.
Well, is half the rule?
Half the roof would be 100.
Is half the rule?
Half of the roof area.
Is half the rule?
I don't know that.
That's not pertinent to this. The top of your garage roof is flat. I'm just asking that you ask for a variance for it.
Fine with me. I only mentioned the 50% because it was in Roger's comments.
Well, my concern is that these decks supporting equipment are growing, and my concern is, are you, yes, there is a roof pitch on the garage, and the site plan showed it less than 50%, so I was concerned that most of that garage is a flat roof.
On?
On the site plan. And you and I discussed it. Then you showed me, and you told me that it was at a scale compared to.
It's a drawing error on the site plan, a small-scale site.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, but.
It is, but it's clarified on a larger scale on the next few pages.
Right. It's gone, these roof-mounted units have gone from a little cutout in the garage to support two units to supporting three or four units and a generator now.
Mike, I guess my question is, Mr. Patterson, there is a 512 pitch on three sides of that roof except but for the opening for the condensers. Is there something that we're working from to request a variance? That's what I'm.
Yes. What I'm saying is, the garage roof does not go up to a pitch. It goes up. You have the entire top of the garage roof cut off. Other things that we've approved have been cut into the side where you still see a garage from all your neighbors looking, you still see a garage going to a pitch. Here you see a, I forget what, pent roof going around in a flat top.
And I understand. You see the.
And I'm not opposing that, I'm saying you should request a variance for it.
Without me saying anything else, we're going to do that.
Thank you.
We, fine.
Don, we're going to do that.
See to requesting a variance for that?
Yeah. I think what Rich is saying is, you shouldn't be able to see the screening of it. You should be seeing the roof.
I understand that.
Right. Yeah. Thank, I use words. Thank you, Clem. I don't think you can accomplish that because of the second floor is overhanging a portion of the garage, and that will be too close to the units.
I believe the opening is facing the back, the rear yard of the property, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, but you see it from two different properties. You see the screening. But I just wanted to put it out there just to kind of keep these under control.
One person at a time speaking, please.
Clem, if you have a comment, speak into the mic.
I have a question on a third floor deck, Mr. Zachar. How many square feet is that third floor deck? Approximately.
About 80 square feet.
What?
About 80 square feet. Approximately.
Looks like seven and a half by 16 maybe, right? Is that about right?
Right.
Looks like 128 square feet. Just one, two, that's just 128 square feet.
Probably around 150 square feet.
150 square, sorry.
119.
I got 128. 128. Roughly. Roughly.
Right there, I think it's about 120, it's not 150.
Yeah, I got 128, Chris. It's like seven and a half by 16.
Are you including the triangle, Craig?
No, I wasn't. No, I didn't.
That's where you got the 150.
150?
Including the triangle. There's no regulation on the size, of course, but they're not permitted, so.
There's no what?
There's no regulation on the size. Anything else?
The triangle is only about 25 square feet.
Chris?
Chris, have you reviewed Roger's report?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here from the public like to speak? Public portion's closed. Any final comments from the board? One comment on the roof is, as Roger said, these cutouts are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. I did not want this to go through as if it didn't need a variance, making it easier for the next one to come and the next one to come to get bigger and bigger. So I think this is something we need to look at, and I commend the applicant for agreeing to ask for the variance.
We need a motion for C variance relief to permit a third floor deck where third floor decks are not permitted and for the requirement of providing a 512 pitched garage roof on the garage where one is not shown.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Don, I have to give you credit on this. I actually really love your design, and I like that you hid the air conditioning, so does my, inside the pence, giving it a 512 look without having everything out in the open. I see no negative impacts to the neighborhood. I think more and more of these designs that you're doing are innovators, they're not cookie cutter, and it's for the betterment of Margate, so I vote in favor.
Clem Martschinski?
I think I'm correct that the existing building is being demolished. That's a shame. It's a rather nice, smaller home. It's a shame to see it go, get another Margate McMansion. But that's what's happening to our town, unfortunately. But as far as the variance is requested for this, they seem to be in accord with what's being proposed in the master plan revisions, so my vote in favor.
Rich Patterson?
With the third floor deck, I absolutely agree they should be on there. I have no problem with it. I don't usually say that, but I would like to make a symbolic no vote on the garage roof, expecting that this is going to pass, and a show one vote because of the garage roof will let the applicant know.
Mike Cristaldi?
I'm okay with the third floor deck. I finally got talked into that. As far as the garage roof, I think it's a great idea. I don't care how big the deck would have to be inside to hide the units, to keep the sound down, because we're getting so dense around here. I'd rather see it on that garage roof, closed in, than I would up. I would up against somebody else's house on the other side. So with all the other reasons that the rest of the board, I vote yes on it.
Jim Gallantino?
I concur with Mike. Since the houses are becoming so elevated anymore, that the, the platforms for the decks are five, six feet off the ground, so why not tuck them into a garage or a roof line on the, on the house, which makes it not a 512 pitch roof? So, you know, moving forward, do you want a big platform with a lot of compressors running in the side yard, or would you rather have it hidden into a side of a garage? The third-floor deck, I don't see any problem. I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I agree with Mr. Gallantino. I think the design of the home is also an improvement to an already beautiful neighborhood. As we know, the third-floor decks are recommended in the new master plan. This deck does meet all the requirements to setbacks. I don't see a detriment to the neighborhood. I vote in favor of the application.
Mike Richmond?
Yeah, the third-floor deck, I don't have a problem with it on both sides. I think it's set far enough away from the neighbors not to cause any issues. And I also agree with the platform on the roof. It's blocked on three sides by the hip roof, and I think it's a good idea. Gable roof, so I, I approve it.
The application passes six to one.
Thank God, that didn't backfire.
Chris, run up and sign this with you.
All right, Mr. Thor?
Next case is Stuart Lundie, 8300 Salem Road, block 10.03, lot 23, in the S-40 district. To grant a C variance for lot area, building coverage, parking space size, and third-floor deck, and possibly others. Taxes and order are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Yes. Mr. Richmond is recusing himself? Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members. My report was originally issued April 10th, 2017, and reissued on May 22nd, 2017, in regard to 8300 Salem Road. The background is as follows: The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling within the S-40 zoning district. The current structure has an attached two-car garage and is two stories in height. Existing structure is also non-flood compliant. A compliant swimming pool with six-foot-high fence is proposed, and the pool equipment location complies as well. The plan was revised to eliminate the third-floor area variance. Several variances still exist, and that is why we are here. There is as follows: Lot area, whereas 4,000 square feet is the minimum lot area, and 3,867 square feet is existing and proposed. And it's an existing non-conforming issue. Building coverage, whereas 35.6% is calculated maximum coverage, and 37% is proposed. Third-floor deck, whereas third-floor decks are not permitted and one is proposed. Parking space size, or it could be viewed as a parking space variance, whereas the min, uh, number-wise, whereas the minimum legal parking space size is nine by 18, and one that is less than nine by 18 is proposed, not much less than nine by 18. Waiver requested, checklist not submitted, so a waiver from submission should be requested, and I recommend that be granted. A sealed survey was not submitted, and that should be submitted as any condition. Plans have been revised, yet no revision date has been shown. Revision plant, revision dates need to be shown on these plans. The existing structures would be demolished and replaced with a new structure. The site was viewed as having one continuous front, which could be considered two front yards, using the point of a reverse curve as the breaking point and two side yards. But I viewed it as one continuous front yard and two side yards, and that's what John and I discussed. The lot area variance request is technically an existing nonconformity and is a buildable lot. The building coverage could be reduced to comply, in my opinion, pretty easily. Third-floor decks and beach blocks are recommended in the master plan but not yet changed in a zoning ordinance, requiring a variance. Four parking spaces are required due to six bedrooms in a design. The number of bedrooms requires four parking spaces. All proposed spaces are stacked parking, four-deep. The last space is just shy of 18 feet, closest to the road. Consideration should be given to having parking below the building too deep, too wide, similar to the current structure. The ceiling height next to the elevator shaft dormer, we're only, I think that's been corrected. That has been revised as per my notes, in italics and boldface. The elevations still do not match up with what is proposed. I, I suggest a roof plan be, clearly show the roof peaks being in compliance. My concern is that the, if it's built according to the floor plans, the roof peak may be higher in certain situations. I just want to avoid that now than in the future. And my recommendations are as follows my report, and I, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Members of the board, my name is Chris Ballen, and I represent the Lundies who are here this evening with us for their property at 8300 Salem Road, lot 23, in block 10.03, in the S-40 zoning district. Again, what is proposed is a new beach block home, this time designed by John Oblenas, with what we believe were relatively insignificant variances. One bulk variance, though, which speaks to the coverage at being just about 1.4% over that which is permitted. The practical difficulties that are faced in designing a house on a lot like this, which is essentially a three-sided lot, with a front yard running the span of, of the curvilinear portion of the lot, is the requirement of front yard landscaping of 65% within that front yard the entire way, which is met, which is a fairly substantial amount of landscaping. When we speak to the parking stall variance, it's the parking stall that is to the top of the side of the lot, and wherever, whether you put the driveway on one side or the other, you're still gonna be confronted with that angular portion of that space, which is gonna just cut off the tip of the top right or the top left corner of the parking space, and leave a parking space eight or 10 inches deficient on one side only of parking space, parking space depth. I think we all know that that is certainly inadequate parking space, particularly when the other side is in excess, I believe, of 20 feet versus the 17 inches. Certainly a substantial parking space. Mr. Oblenas can speak to you concerning the coverage. The coverage comes about, again, as a result of attempting to comply with the landscaping, which has been done, and then enforcing the parking to the one side, and I know Tom will have a comment, but four-deep on the one side in the driveway, stacked as they are. The building, the building doesn't lend, lend itself to a design of parking underneath, so we're gonna stick with the driveway design. Mr. Oblenas? John, if you would, you need to be sworn.
Please raise your right hand. Name, name and business address, please.
John Oblenas, 102 South 8th Street, Monument, Brooklyn.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will.
Thank you.
John, you're a licensed architect...
I have the mic.
John, you're a registered architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you appeared, appeared before this board previously?
Yes.
And prepared the plans for the Lundies that the board is gonna consider this evening?
Yes, I have.
If you would, be kind enough to take us through the house, take the board through the house and the public, speak to the variances that we're talking about, the three variances we're talking about, and then if you would, speak to Roger's concerns about the roof plan versus the floor plans, whether they do or do not match up.
They'll do. Basically, it's what we call an upside-down house, where on the ground floor, we have multiple bedrooms, and then the second floor is all the living areas. We have the living, dining, kitchen, to enhance the views to the beach from there. Third floor will be the master bedroom suite. Includes an elevator lobby, a stair lobby, and then all the closets and et cetera for the third floor and the third-floor deck. To go through the variances, the, the parking issue, what I did was, I basically centered the parking lane between the property line and the building. There could be some shifting. If we have to alleviate that corner nonconformity, we can shift the parking lane. We'd almost eliminate it, but still maybe have a, a couple of inches, but when you put parking against the property line, you know, again, it's a problem because you're opening doors into the neighbor's lot. So I centered it, which created that little triangle of peace that was nonconforming.
But John, that leaves, that leaves open the possibility of opening a patio door at the location where you decided to park.
Yes, yes, very easily. Then, the issue of the site itself, the issue of the building coverage, as instruction by my clients, was to create bedroom spaces on that first floor, again, as an upside-down house, and the requirement was to create at least a 10-foot minimum-sized bedroom. You know, this is a nice neighborhood, we want homes to be consistent, and so by using a 10-foot minimum bedroom, and five bedrooms, bathrooms, hallways, access to it, by the time we worked it all out, we ended up being over the, the building coverage issue. Part of the problem with that was working with a difficult site. This is not a corner property. This is really a pie-shaped property, where we're, we're pushed in, literally on, on a major part of the property, pushed the building in, again, trying to work inside-out and try to create some minimum-sized rooms on the inside. It was, it was a push and pull between the odd-shaped property and then creating at least a minimum-sized bedrooms on the inside.
John, if you would, tell us, when you say pushes, pushes the project in because of the pie-shaped lot, what does that mean?
Well, when you, when you design a building, you know, you try, there's a couple of things we're looking at, which is, you know, the feasibility, you know, the cost. When you do so many corners in a building, you know, it creates cost, efficiency, and things like that. So we try to maintain a relatively straightforward building, working with that big curve along the street, and that's what forced us to, when I say pushing it in.
But when everybody, everybody looks at this plan, everybody says it's only 1.4%. That's relatively insignificant. That could be designed out. Why is it, in this instance, you prefer to keep that in? What does it do to the design of the house?
Well, again, we're trying to maintain, again, living space on that first floor as opposed to the second floor. Second floor is pretty much open plan. It's kitchen, it's dining, it's living areas, it's a large deck on the second floor. On the first floor, again, my client has a large family, he wants to be able to place everyone in decent-sized bedrooms, and we decide, you know, a bedroom 10 feet was a good number. Actually, the original plan before this effort, we had 12-foot bedrooms, which pushed the building coverage way out. So we tried to pull it back in and create a number of bedrooms within that, that criteria that we established, and that's what ended up having this overage.
In today's design standards, architectural design standards for a single-family home, is a 10-foot, when you say 10-foot, is it 10 by 10 or is it 10 by...
10 by 10. Sometimes there's one that's less than 10, one is a little bit bigger than 10, but the average bedroom size was 10 minimum, minimum size.
Is that, is that in line with the contemporary-sized bedroom in a residential single-family home?
Well, in Margate, you know, from, from my experience, and I've designed a number of homes here, is that I've been asked to do at least 12 by 12s, you know, 12 by 12s, 12 by 14s, and those aren't master, but those are just normal-sized bedrooms. When you're building down to 10 feet, again, you have to work the closet in, you know, it's, it's, it's really tight, you can't really furnish it that well with a client with a bedroom that's small, at least at a 10-foot dimension.
But 10 by 10, at least, at least allows you to do that manageable?
Yes, yes.
You've addressed the parking space. If you would, would you comment upon the third-floor deck, please, in reference to previous cases, some of the factors that the board likes to hear with respect to third-floor decks, and whether or not we've addressed those with this application?
Yeah, the third-floor deck basically is off the master bedroom. It's, it's a place where the client can come out in the morning, have a cup of coffee, and have an ocean view, and it's really a very minor deck. I believe it's like nine by seven or something, maybe 65 square feet.
Would you point it out on the plan?
Yes, on the, on the plan... Third-floor plan, the ocean view is toward the bottom, and the deck is just off the master bedroom itself. So it has, it's a small, it's a nine-foot by six-and-a-half-foot dimension. Again, sit out, imagine a cup of coffee or something, you know, in the morning, maybe something in the evening, but it's not a public space where you can have, you know, large amounts of people outside, you know.
Is it protected from the surrounding properties?
It is. It's behind a pent roof. I'll show you that in the elevation here. On the lower right-hand side, number one, you can see that it's, it's basically half into the, the pent itself, so it's not just the guardrail all the way down to the deck, but it's half-covered by a, a small roof scape, to afford some privacy.
The remainder of the property obviously meets all the other bulk controls?
Yes, it does.
Okay, the, the curvilinear portion is in front of the lot, that's about 120, 120 feet plus in front?
Yes.
The entirety of that meets the 65% front yard landscape?
Plus, yes, absolutely, more than is required.
And the entirety of the lot, in fact, meets lot landscaping as is required, am I right?
Yes, because, again, because it's a pie-shaped lot, we have the two side yards, you know, with their minimums and stuff, so we have more than adequate landscape availability.
Would you comment upon Mr. McLaren's comments about the roof areas and the floor areas, whether or not they will in fact match up when the property's under construction, hopefully?
Yes, they will, and what I did was, I saw the comments about the headroom, and what I did was, this is not in your package here, I call it sheet A5.
This is prepared for exhibit for this evening's purposes?
Correct, yes.
Based on the report that we received?
Yes, and the concern was headrooms and roof lines and stuff, so the, the critical areas, I show that, a section through that, where we have adequate headroom space in maintaining the five and 12, minimum five and 12 pitch, the one about the, near the elevator lobby, the one with the laundry room, the closet. So we took sections over those critical areas, and we show that, and I have a human figure here that shows that we do have adequate headroom space, and also maintaining the, the minimum. In this case, it's actually more than five and 12, but it's, we can meet the five and 12 pitch with, with those sections.
And meet the maximum height?
With, of course, within the maximum height, yes.
Mr. McLaren, if you, maybe give, hand that exhibit to Mr. McLaren to see if that's exactly what he was talking about. If not, we need to know that.
Sort of. That was more of a concern in the previous generation of plans, but I guess my concern is, if you look at the side elevation, number four, with the elevator equipment... Part of that dormer.
Yeah, I show, that's what I show, just one section here. Can I bring it up to you to show it, or?
No, I'm all right.
Yeah, it shows that, that's that dormer where the stair, and then behind us is, is the elevator tower. That's way higher than the air, and that covers any equipment that's required in that ceiling area. So we have at least seven feet on the lowest part, and that goes up to eight and a half, nine...
Right. I, I guess my question is more, shouldn't you be seeing the peak of that elevator tower on the other elevation? I mean, it's protruding through the roof, above the roof, and that's the only elevation where you see it.
Well, when I, when I do my drawings, it basically shows on the side that it appears.
Right.
If we're looking at the opposite side, I guess is what you're looking at, it's gonna be behind another roof line.
But that's the highest point of the house.
Yeah, right here. This, well, if you're looking at the opposite of this, which is the rear side, would be the front.
I think what Mr. McLaren is saying is, the elevator tower, the peak of the elevator tower is the highest point of any roof, and it should be seen from all of it.
No, it's not the high, it matches other roof lines. It's not the highest point. It still matches, we're, we're maxing out at the 30 feet.
Right.
So really, it's no, it doesn't go above, it's pretty much the same height, so we maintain that...
I understand that, but it, it's standing out on its own. You should be seeing that from...
There's no roof behind it.
Yeah, I know, and I, and you're right about that. I don't show it on the other side only because it's not the, the one that's kind of like in your face, so to speak, you know. I try to show what's on the elevation.
I just think you ought to have a roof...
I know, it should show, there should be another line back here that shows that, just in a distance, but because it's a...
Just want to make sure it's not higher.
It won't be higher. No, it won't be higher than, although for mechanical, aren't we allowed to go higher, just, just for argument's sake? For mechanical, what they call a pertinence, aren't we allowed to go higher than the roof line?
No.
Or not?
No, not for residential.
Okay, okay, well, it's not, but I just thought, in case we had to raise it up as a mechanical space.
There are permitted projections into the height, but not...
Not mechanical.
Not accounted for.
We're working on that, though.
Thank you. But, no, but, no, it's not higher than, you know, it's not higher than the 30 feet allowed for us.
John, taking into consideration the relatively diminished parking space deviation and the coverage deviation, whether or not that's diminished to 60 square feet, taking those two items individually, do you think they could be granted, or they could be designed into this house without impairing the intent of his own plan and his own coordinates in Margate?
Well, taking that, that thought, you know, I believe that it's not such a large difference that it kind of disappears into the plan. It's not like you're talking 1% change. I know I'm gonna get the argument that, and this is, you know, as, as an architect speaking, can we, can we bring it to informance? You know, of course we can, but again, that sacrifices some of the interior spaces, you know, bringing a bedroom that's nine feet down to maybe nine, 10 feet down to nine feet, you know, again, trying to be consistent with a lot of the homes in the area, a lot of the bigger homes in the area. We're trying to, to at least, with a minimum-sized room, match that, you know. When we start to shrink those rooms, then I think that's the problem, you know, not, not the overall 60 square feet change that we have. know, not the overall 60 square feet of change that we have.
And the house is designed, obviously, as in keeping with the scale of the homes in that neighborhood?
I believe so, yes, yes.
And the third-floor deck, do you believe that is designed in a manner that's consistent with what the floor has contemplated in the documentation in the master plan?
Yes, because, again, the third-floor deck is not a large one, it's only dedicated to the master bedroom, and it's not like a public deck, where you can have large parties, you know, maybe a lot of noise and stuff. It's private, it's small, it does have the ocean view, all the amenities for a master bedroom, but again, it's 9 by 7, it's really a small component for a third-floor deck.
Do you then think the variance that we're talking about can be granted without substantial deficit, substantial deficit to the public?
I would hope so, yes.
Mr. Patterson, that's all I have, unless the board has anything?
Yeah, Mr. Obalinas, I'm going to use the argument that you just said about the 1%. You've been built, what, 100, 200 houses in Margate, and why you can look at this lot and put this house on it, you say there's six bedrooms, but you also have a den with its own bathroom, its own shower, and, and an office, I mean, it's, and it doesn't affect parking, I'm not saying there's a problem with that, it doesn't affect parking, but, yes, you designed a house too big for this lot. And it's an odd-shaped lot, it obviously fits a huge house, not too huge, I mean, it fits right in with the neighborhood, it's a beautiful house, but yeah, I think it's a problem that you couldn't design, and instead of asking us to give 1%, that you could have come off somehow from all these rooms that are in here. It's, I mean, it could be construed as an eight-bedroom house, and that's, again, there's nothing wrong with that. This is what you're putting on that lot, you knew the lot you had to work with to begin with. So, that's, that is my concern, the third-floor deck, the foot on the parking, I don't have any problem with that, but I still have a problem that you, as, I mean, I know the work you do, that you couldn't design a house that fit on this lot.
In regard to that, you have six bedrooms here, and you're saying some of them are small, 9 foot 7 by 10 foot 11. If you had five bedrooms, and shrunk the house a little bit with five bedrooms, you would have, you would be, on the building coverage, conformed.
Right, I understand.
Now, you're asking six bedrooms, and like Mr. Patterson said, there's two other rooms that could be used for bedrooms, too. I mean, how many, how many bedrooms do you really need?
Well, and the den has its own bathroom and shower, so, the den has its own bathroom and shower.
I saw that, too, yeah, but you also have six bedrooms listed here.
Well, I, you know, I can't accept, because it's not my family, but I guess...
Yes.
...
But if there was one, the bedrooms could be larger, if you had less bedrooms, that's what I'm saying.
I, if I, I'm sorry, Des, go ahead. I just had the question before Rich even spoke, I have kind of echoed the same concerns. I think the board is looking conservatively at building coverage, especially because that's going to have the biggest impact on the neighborhood. I want to know, I believe your justifications, if you could clarify for the board, or maybe add to your justifications why you think it satisfies the criteria. All I heard, to be fair, is essentially that it would keep building costs down, so if you could explain to the board something we're missing, other than that factor, why it should qualify.
Yeah, again, you know, I know, building costs are not an issue, obviously, when you talk about these issues, but basically, when I design a home, it's from the inside-out, so I want to make sure that the inside, the rooms, the circulation, we try to minimize wasted space, through hallways and stuff, but when I was commissioned to design these number of bedrooms, and maintain a minimum-sized bedroom, consistent with some of the other homes in the area, you know, if other homes have 12 by 12, 12 by 14, and this home has, all their bedrooms are 10 by 9, 9 by 10, I felt that to be consistent with a lot of the other new homes in the area, that with larger bedrooms, that I know that we're sacrificing size, the number, I can attest to, my client will tell you that, we need the number of bedrooms for family, and for privacy and stuff, but the idea is that it's a fight between being consistent with the newer homes in the neighborhood, working with a difficult site, and at the same time, try to keep the overall size, the building coverage, very close to the thing, and I just missed it.
John, let me let you up, not there.
Yeah, thanks.
Dest, or maybe Mr. Lundey can address some of those issues for you, if that's okay, unless you want to finish up with Obalinas first, then Mr. Lundey can speak.
You want him to speak before we're done with him?
It's up to you guys, however you want to handle it.
Chris, that'll help, but I think Mr. Obalinas's answer was significant to me, because we're dealing with a tear-down, not a renovation. We're starting from scratch, so, as a professional expert, I wanted his opinion. But both may help.
Mr. Lundey, please raise your right hand, your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Stuart Lundey, 8300 Salem Road in Margate.
And you swear from testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I want to begin by saying, I have to take Mr. Obalinas off the hook. I have five children, I have five grandchildren, I have more on the way, so I need at least six bedrooms to accommodate myself and my five children, and we tried to get bedrooms where the little kids, the two-year-olds, and the babies could sleep in the same bedroom with their parents. That was the idea. So, I had the home in 8107 Atlantic Avenue, and it was a five-bedroom home, and the upper third-floor bedrooms were very small, and we decided to move to this lot, because more kids are now married, more grandchildren, and so when John was designing the home, I said, "John, I need a bedroom that's at least 9, 9, 6, 10 feet," because I got to put a blow-up at the end of the bed for the little kids, to try and get the kids in with their bedroom. It was not John's design, I have to take, and my wife have to take full blame for this. Obviously, you can draw a 2,800-foot square-foot house on this lot, but the thing is, we were trying to get on that floor enough bedrooms for the children as best we could. I do want to say that the den does not have a bathroom, if, I think you might be mislooking at the plan. That bathroom is on the other side for that other bedroom. Across the hall, there is a, there is a bathroom, but it's not attached to the den. I just want to get that misconception out.
It looks like there's a, what's that door called?
Pocket.
A pocket door for that, and then a bathroom, a shower?
Yeah.
That are blocked off by the...
Yeah, yeah, see, there is, there is, you cannot get from the den into that bathroom. That bathroom, that you, the pocket door you see is for the bedroom closer to the road, or the, you know, it's, I don't know which direction that is, north or south. So, I just wanted to assure you of that, that that...
Each bedroom has its own bathroom.
Yes, but not, not the den, you keep saying the den has a bathroom, it doesn't.
Bathroom 5. What bedroom does bathroom 5 go to?
Are you looking the one that's where it says kitchen laundry?
Behind the kitchen laundry.
Yeah, that doesn't go anywhere, that's just in the hallway. I mean, if somebody comes in from the yard, they have a bathroom they can use. The den did not have a bathroom, that's across a hallway, I guess they could use it, but the idea was, if you came out of the den and you needed a bathroom, you could go use a bathroom, or if you came in from the yard, you could use a bathroom, that wasn't in somebody's bedroom. I just wanted to clarify that.
The way your plan shows here, there's a pocket door sliding, closing off the bathroom and the den, and...
Yeah, there's, it...
And making it one room.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So, that makes it actually a bedroom, because it has a bathroom.
Yeah, no, that pocket door, the pocket, what you see sticking out that is a pocket door, it doesn't have to be, it was just one of those things that we thought, well, maybe we'll put a pocket door there at night, so if the guy's in the den, if the kid's sleeping on a couch, they could close the door, but it's not a requirement, we gladly would waive the pocket door. It was, it was not intended. And even the smallest bedroom, the one closest to the street, is 9'7". So, we tried to make compromises, hoping that just being a little bit more than 1% over, the board might find that that's just not such a large variance we're requesting. If the board feels it's, it is one of those things that you're just not, you know, prepared to do, then we accept the board's decision, and we'll go back to the drawing board, and we'll make the bedroom smaller. But I need that number of bedrooms, unfortunately, because of the number of children and the number of grandchildren, and I'm just stuck, and that's the whole reason we moved from 8107 Atlantic, to get more bedrooms. So, I do thank you for your time, and I appreciate any consideration you give us.
Thank you, Stuart, that gets me off the hook, I guess, I couldn't say he made me do it, but, I was going to say...
Mr. Obalinas.
Dest, are you done with him?
Is it showing, you're showing a six-burner stove on the porch, the second-floor porch, a four-burner?
It's an outside, it's a barbecue, basically, it's a barbecue. I don't have a template for a barbecue set, but it's basically...
Okay.
Is that it?
It's a barbecue outside.
I don't have a template that shows just something that...
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
He's done?
I don't know, you'd have to ask the fire chief.
John, the 1.4 percentage over, what is that in square footage?
60 square feet.
Okay, and I know, like, Mr. Losles, he said we don't want McManus, would you visually see a difference of that, of 1.4%, visually looking at the house?
Looking at the house, you will not see...
You would eliminate that.
You won't see the difference, but remember, the second floor is smaller than the first floor, it's pulled in because of the decks and stuff, so technically, it's, as you look at the building, it gets smaller as you look toward the top. It's designed to not be overwhelming, you know, it's open air, the decks are open, the first floor, and parts of the first floor are under that deck in any case, so if you pull it in six inches, or, and we talked about ways to reduce, so 9'6" better becomes 9 feet, technically, so if you pull it in, you don't really see the difference.
So, visually, someone driving by would not really see a difference?
Correct, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Obalinas? Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I do.
Mike?
Why do we have condensers in the bedrooms?
What's that, Mike?
Could you speak into the microphone, Mike? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Why do we have condensers in the bedrooms?
On A3, John, the master bedroom should have two condensers.
It's a lamp. They just said it's a lamp.
Lamps.
Well, they're, it's assembled on a computer, that's...
Mr. Cristaldi, out of order.
I have nothing further for you, John.
I know it's not a violation of any of our regulations, but I seriously wonder whether that four-stack parking is going to work. I think you, not you, did you have a choice? It's going to be a parking nightmare, five kids, grandchildren, you're going to generate eight or 10 cars sooner or later. I don't know what can be done about it, but I think it's a question to be considered.
That's my concern also, with more bedrooms, the more bedrooms you have, the more cars come. Every, you just, I see it all the time, because college kids come down, everybody has a car, the wife comes down by herself, the husband comes down by himself, everybody, we're loaded with cars.
Mr. Lundey, can I ask you a question? Is there parking available on Salem Road? Is there no parking there, or is parking allowed?
No park.
One thing about Salem Road is, it doesn't have, oh, it doesn't have a street sign, it doesn't have "No Parking" on it anywhere, but I'm told by my neighbors, there's no parking.
That wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it is, it is the answer to my question, but there's no...
No mark.
There's no, well, is that beach block?
Yes.
Yes, it runs into Plymouth, and on Plymouth, I think it says "No Parking," but I've never, I've never seen a "No Parking" on Salem. If it's there, I haven't seen it.
Okay, so I don't know either, then.
You wouldn't have enough egress to go both ways, it's not one-way street.
I forgot, it's okay.
It's a, it's a wide street, though, remember, it's a very wide street.
But it is beach block, there's probably not parking, but I, I forgot about that.
In regard to Craig and Clem's question, you had said in the beginning, and maybe Mr. Obalinas could explain this to me, why you couldn't elevate the house and put the parking underneath. Four-stack parking means you're only going to use two anyway, let me finish, Chris, and the elevation at this point, you're at 4.5 feet above grade to the first floor, which means that you could actually elevate...
Three more feet.
Get your parking in, even if we gave a slight roof pitch, so it doesn't go up too high, but you encompass that, and you'd have a ton of storage for the pool, you'd have a cabana house, everything to be in that envelope.
Essentially, Tom, that's not the design that was considered.
I understand that, but you said it can't be done by the plan, I'd like him to explain why.
Okay, anything can be done, we...
That's not what you said in the beginning.
Anything can be done, and I'll take that back, I reserve, that's not what Lundey's wanting, anything can be done, it can be done. It would require a complete redesign of this plan, John can explain that, why?
Yeah.
You want to double, you want to double load it?
Chris, I asked him, let him explain why it would redesign it, go ahead.
Why, what would be entailed, what would, Tom, you want to ask a question, your question?
Well, a couple, I...
Go three feet higher than existing and pull your cars in, what would be the major redesign?
Well, here's a couple of things, again, as an architect, when we start to lay out the issues, and the first thing, the problem is, when you have a garage on the first floor, there is that elevation, which creates multi-levels on that first floor, which I don't mind, I don't like to have multi-levels where you're walking up and downstairs to get to the space above the garage, that was the first thing I thought, and I've seen those versions where you have the garage taking up a big chunk of that first floor, and we're also battling to have the number of bedrooms on that floor, you know, again, the requirement that was put on me was the number of bedrooms are critical, the size of the bedrooms are critical, to put the garage, take away literally two of those bedrooms where you can put them.
Tom, are you suggesting you raise it a whole house?
Yes, yes.
Now, also... John, you're not following me. If you take the existing house...
I understand, raise the whole thing up.
Elevate the entire thing as is...
I got it, right, okay, so not just the garage portion?
Now, what you have is pull-in double spaces...
Yeah.
You have the whole back of the house now, where, against the pool, where you could have a cabana, a changing, I mean, it's a nice plan, and you accommodate all your...
But then, but then, again, that's the part two, I understand, I misunderstood, not just the garage, it's like...
And you're not going to have multi-levels, it's all the same.
So, it's all the same, now...
John, that could be done, could it not?
It could, it could be, well, with the variance for a roof, for height variance, it could be done, we're losing, we're losing three feet, we're already at 5 and 12, so we're going to lose, we're going to, you're not going to do less than 5 and 12, I don't think.
You would need some relief at the roof, probably roof pitch variance.
Roof pitch and probably height, because, again...
And this is beach block, this is essentially beach block?
Yes.
Where views are optimal, where fortunately, there's not that many people here tonight, probably to complain about this house, where in light of that suggestion, we probably have a roof full of people.
Actually, Chris, you wouldn't, because of the location of the house, the neighbors' facing the beach, are actually going to have a clear view of Plymouth, anyway, and I've already talked, when I was there, to the Finks, and they're right across the street, and they would rather have more parking encompassed than the height, they're not worried about the height.
But you're not talking about more parking, you're still talking about four spaces.
Yeah, but you're not going to use those four spaces.
Why are we having this conversation? That's not the design that's proposed.
You're 30 above 12 now.
But why are we having the conversation? That's not what we're talking about.
It's going to look like a high-rise. You're 30 above 12 now.
If we do that, if we do that.
Yeah, you're 42 feet now.
Thank you, it'll be four feet higher, thank you. Mr. Patterson, I know you're going to open to the public, but if the board would consider breaking out that coverage variance as a separate vote, I'd be okay with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Anything else, any questions? Is there anyone here from the audience that would like to comment? Public portion is closed. Any other questions or concerns? We're going to have two votes, one on the building coverage and one on everything else.
Okay, I'll do the building coverage second. Okay, we're gonna need a motion, the first motion is gonna be a motion for C variance relief for lot area where 4,000 square feet is required and 3,867 square feet is proposed. That is an existing non-conformity. For parking space size.
Parking space dimension, so overall, the size of that space is okay, you just mentioned.
Okay, for parking space dimension of where nine by 18 is required, and they're proposing nine by 17.17.
Have one portion.
For one of the four parking spaces.
Yeah, only one portion, the other side of that parking space meets, meets the depth. Seventeen and change is proposed in one corner of its face.
And it exceeds, it exceeds the depth, I'm sorry. The one, the left side exceeds the depth, just, the left side is six inches shorter, so it's a.
Right, okay, so for that one portion as shown on the plan. And for third floor deck, where third floor decks are not permitted, there's also a waiver which should be in the motion from having to submit a checklist. And along with the conditions contained in Mr. McClaner's report issued April 10th, 2017, and reissued May 22nd, 2017, to the extent not modified tonight.
Leo? Leo, can we do a show of hands for the one vote, or we need to have a roll call?
No, we'll do a normal vote, and then we'll go into the next one.
Your motion?
Could you just say them again?
Sure. The variances are for lot area where 4,000 square feet is required, and they're proposing 3,867 square feet. That's an existing non-conformity. And then for the, for the dimension of the one parking space where, in nine by 18, parking space is required, and they're proposing in that one corner, as shown on the plans, a nine by 17.17. And for third floor deck, which are not permitted, and they're proposing one, and there's also a waiver from, from the applicant having to submit a checklist with its application. And that's together with the conditions contained in Mr. McClaner's report dated April 10th, 2017, and reissued May 22nd, 2017, to the extent not modified tonight through the testimony.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Tom Collins?
As far as the lot area, obviously, that's de minimis, it's, it's nothing we can do about it. The third floor deck, we're already pushing to get the third floor decks on, so I have no problem with that. Problem I have is with the parking. And we're trying, nobody drives three-quarter of a car. You can say it's deficient only in one corner, or this or that, but it's a car. And you're trying to cram in six bedrooms, and we're squeezing in four spaces which won't fit, because we don't drive three-quarters of a car, to qualify to get those six bedrooms. I just don't think the plan is proper. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. The character of the existing house and the houses across from Salem Road are smaller, more quaint, more cottagy. I just don't think that this is the right thing to do, so I vote no.
What is the no vote for, the parking space mention? Six inches?
For the parking space, yes.
Clem Moslaski?
Well, I don't wanna go through a whole lot of verbiage, repeating what Tom said, but I, which is unusual, basically agree with him. So I have to vote no also.
Rich Patterson?
How did he vote?
No.
The lot area is absolute yes, there's, there's no problem with that. The third floor deck, absolutely yes. The parking space size, I don't think a quarter of a car is the size of a Phillies pennant. There is no effect whatsoever. I don't like four parking spaces stacked, but that's what the rule is, that he can have it. It is literally, and I think several years ago, I, I had to get a variance myself for a piece of my garage that was the size of a Phillies pennant, and I did bring in a Phillies pennant, and they made them keep it as a, as an exhibit, so I lost my Phillies pennant. But I really think that is so minimal, it's not the entire parking spot, it is a tenth of a, 1% of the parking spot, so absolutely, I vote yes.
Mike Cristaldi?
As far as the third floor deck, no problem, we're going for those. For the coverage, it's existing, it's gonna be. As far as the parking, my truck is 23 feet. You could park two cars next to my truck, of today's cars. I don't see an issue with the parking on there with the 18 feet. By the time you park, you're gonna be fine again. My vote's yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I'm still not clear why we're voting on so many different things. Is it, if he gets a no on one portion of it, is the house unbuildable?
We're, that's what we're doing.
Correct.
But I mean, if he gets a, if you're a no on the parking variance, but you're a yes on the coverage, or a no on the coverage and a yes on the parking, you still don't get to build a house.
Yes, he does.
Yes, he does, Jim. This is the way we're doing it, and it's already been decided. So yes or no on everything except the lot coverage? Building, I'm sorry.
House would comply.
Building coverage.
It just, it just got way out of hand, that's all, Chris. As to the coverage, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mike. I think that it's an existing condition that the lot is undersized.
Lot size.
It's lot size.
Four thousand, that's 300, 3,876, 660, 133 feet short. And to the parking, I'm a no on that. And to the.
No, this is one vote on all these.
That's why, that's why, that's why I asked you the question at the beginning.
Everything except building coverage.
Everything but building coverage.
Everything but building coverage is one vote.
Right. Look, they, on the parking, isn't it one of the conditions of parking?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Six inches on the space.
Great.
So you vote no on everything, then?
No, I vote yes, but the parking.
There is no separate vote on that, Jim, it's yes or no on all three. If you vote no on one, you vote no on all of them.
Okay, then it's yes. I take it back, that's a yes vote. I'm a yes vote on everything.
Okay.
Margaret Cooper Nolte?
I am fine with the third floor deck. I'm okay with the lot area as well. I don't love the stackable parking, but it's a posh-shaped lot. I think because the neighborhood is quiet, there is not a lot of traffic that goes through that area, for safety issues, it's okay to back into that area. They have a large family, we love large families in Margate. I can tell you that if I have a buyer who's looking for a five or six-bedroom home, they're impossible to find. I like to have families spend their summers here in Margate.
Craig Palmasano?
The lot area is what it is. It's a little bit deficient, but that's de minimis. Parking spaces, I don't like the stacked parking, but once again, that is what it is. The deck, the deck, I'm fine with the third floor deck, so I'm a yes on those three.
Okay, that portion of the application passes. Five, two, two.
And, and now we need a motion for C variance relief to permit building coverage at 37% where the maximum permitted is 35.6%.
I'll second. Tom Collins?
Considering everything that happened on the last vote.
We need a motion from a regular board member.
I'll second.
No, we need another motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you, you want to second it? I'm second.
Considering everything that we've gone through on the last vote, I think that the building coverage is very de minimis, since everybody seems to want to jam everything in here, I vote in favor.
Clem Moslaski?
If this lot was the full 4,000 square feet required in the zoning district, this problem would almost go away. And of course, the applicant has no control over the size of the existing lot. Although I think the architect, with a little extended effort, could probably eliminate that one point, whatever problem.
Clem, could you speak closer to the microphone? I can't hear you.
The fact that the lot is undersized.
Thank you.
Is causing most of the need for this variance. I don't think they should be penalized for this. I vote in favor.
Rich Patterson?
I, I have to vote no on this part of it. I, I don't believe the house could not be designed with 60 square feet less. So I see no benefit to the neighborhood by making it larger. It is 1%, but they could come off 1%. I vote no.
Mike Cristaldi?
It's a tough one. It's, it's only 60 square feet. I'm sure, John, you could lose that somewhere. 60 square feet on just six inches off of one run of the house. Wouldn't, you know, and then you wouldn't even be here. Would be bad. I'm gonna have to vote no, just, I, my vote is no.
Jim Gallantino?
Are you done?
This is a good case.
This is one issue, Jim.
Pardon me?
Just one issue, that's all you're voting on.
I, I understand, I got it now.
Okay, okay.
After an hour of this case, I finally figured out where we're going. I kinda agree with Mike, but I was surprised at what Clem came up with on his analysis, so, which swayed my vote, because I thought that detriments were a little bit more outweighing the benefit, but I think Clem persuaded me, I vote yes on that one.
Margaret Cooper Nolte?
I agree with Mr. Losleski as well, because of the size of the lot, and I know that, I don't think visually that the 60 square foot is going to make a difference. When you look at the house, I think it's a beautiful home, and I vote in favor.
Craig Palmasano?
Goes both ways on this one. The, the house sitting on the plot, I feel takes up too much room. I think it could be designed a little bit smaller, just a little bit. It's not much, but it's just a little bit over. I have to vote no on, on, on the building coverage.
The application passes four to three.
Congratulations. Someone sign the paperwork for the.
I'm piling it up, it's all Chris's.
Yeah, can we take a 10 minute, a five-minute break?
Testimony provided provides evidence and supports the variances, then I would recommend that below recommendations, as, as you can read in my report, if not already done, be a condition of approval. And also, the survey information that I requested, including the flood certificate showing the elevation by a licensed surveyor of the first floor elevation. That concludes my, oh, the other condition that I think is relevant to this is a, the condition of any approval shall be obtaining the access easement for the shared driveway. That concludes my report at this time.
Roger, I have a question. I, I don't know if I misunderstood you. Are we doing a D variance for part of this?
No, it, as originally submitted, it was a D variance, but Peter was able to drop the roof level enough that.
Okay.
It's borderline C D variance, but let's go on the basis that it's a C variance if the ASO survey.
I just know that Tom's here and Jim's here, so if it's a C variance.
It's a C variance today.
It'll be a C variance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClaner, members of the board. Chris Ballinson for the Chipmunks, Bob and Amy who are here, they own the property at 34 West Drive in Marvin Gardens. The operative request tonight for this property and what.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think I stated for the record that Mike Cristaldi has refused himself. Go right ahead.
What started out the project, really operative variance, and we can get into height a little bit, the operative variance is to construct the third floor, to give the Chipmunks additional habitable space at their existing Marvin Gardens-style home. And that's what's important, because several years ago, well before Sandy, this board and the town adopted an ordinance and made part of the land use ordinance a provision that Marvin Gardens was not to have third floors. And that was, the idea behind that was to maintain the integrity of the architecture as it was, and as it is today for the most part. By maintaining the architecture, it was to help to try and prevent the construction of new homes. And to maintain what's there now, and the look of what's there now, and the scale of what's there now. And when I say that what's important is the scale of what's there now is what's important. What the Chipmunks propose is a third floor that's been designed by Peter, which essentially sits at the center of their existing home. Really tough to see from the front or from the back, but they have a long, skinny home and a wonderful backyard. If the Chipmunks were permitted to, to construct this third floor, it would only be four feet higher than the house as it exists today. The house would not need to be lifted, the house would not need to be raised, okay? Alternative living space arrangements would be to, obviously to raise the house up to, up to the BFE, which will place it out of character.
It doesn't have to be raised because it meets BFE, or because they're not doing more than 50%?
It's one roof, yeah, not.
Not more than 50%?
Fifty percent, that's correct. If it were to, if it were to be more space, and, and, look, I'm fairly believing what I'm saying tonight about this project, and I, I like what they're proposing, because it makes sense. It's a project where you build this, you build the extra roof, you don't really know it's there. Although it's considered a third floor, it's only four feet higher. Are there third floors that you should say no to? Ones that are intrusive and ones that are offensive? Yes. But give me, give me a little bit of time, Peter, a little bit of time tonight, to explain why we think this is kinda what was intended by the, by the board and by the governing body years ago, when that ordinance was adopted. It was to maintain what Marvin Gardens looks like today when you drive through there. If you guys were to permit this third floor to be, to be constructed, you wouldn't really see it from the street, and you wouldn't really see it from the back. As I said, it doesn't protrude out the sides, and it's only four feet above what's there now, meeting the height requirements with no, with, we don't believe in height variance. Roger has a different take on that.
Yes, I do.
As, as understood. As, as opposed to a full renovation of the house, which would require the house to be raised. And I'm not saying that raising these houses is not a good, not a bad idea, it's what, it's what the town's been doing in furtherance of safety and furtherance of flood ratings, but it seems to me like the idea behind the Marvin Gardens ordinance was that, was that it stay the way it is, where the houses not be raised. Because these houses are impossible to raise. Or to build a new house, which is completely contrary to the ordinance. What is proposed this evening is the least offensive and most consistent with the ordinance that says don't build third floors. It's, it's slightly more habitable space, slightly higher than what's there now, and, and in the least offensive manner, and the least contrary to the ordinance that says no third floors. This is the best plan of the three. Pete, you're up.
Do you want to get the microphone, Peter?
Can you please raise your right hand? And state your name and business address for the record, please?
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Martin.
And you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Peter, you're, will the board accept Mr. Weiss's?
Yes.
Credential, thank you. Peter, if you would, tell the board and the public what it is the Chipmunks came to you to carry out at their property, what their thoughts were about their property and maintaining it, it the way it is, and what you've come up with and why you think that's the right project for the property and Marvin Gardens as a whole. And speak up.
Let's speak up. Thank you. The existing house is a fairly old, probably close to 100-year-old Marvin Gardens house. It's pretty typical, stucco, small windows, has certain details that are sort of characteristic of Marvin Gardens. The first floor is all living space. The current second floor has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The Chipmunks, as many people who live around here have growing families, so they need to gain a little bit of space for grandchildren. So what they wish to do is create a small addition, in this case, it's a little over 500 square feet on the third floor, to have a bedroom, a bathroom, and a play area for the, for the grandchildren. We would like to preserve the rear yard, so the idea was to, you know, construct the third floor, and we thought that would be the most, I'm sorry, the least obtrusive to the neighborhood.
If you would work, work in front of the plan, show the board where you touch upon it. Show the board where the, where the third floor is proposed, and when you speak of the yard area, where that is.
Well, the yard area is pretty obvious, so it's this large area in the rear. There's a rear, fairly large rear deck. This shaded portion on the site plan represents the third floor addition, so it's basically in the back half of the house, which makes it a little less apparent from the street. From the elevations, you can see it here. So it's basically the back portion of the building, according to the full width. You can see I have some photographs here, so getting to the third floor idea. These are some photographs I took of houses in Marvin Gardens that currently have third floors.
There's six photographs, Peter?
Yes, there are.
Okay, well, each of those six photographs depicts a house in Marvin Gardens with a third floor?
Yes. So the point of this is, I mean, some of these houses are original, some of them, at least the one in the top middle is relatively new, I think it's about 10 years old. A couple are sort of attic expansions, if you will. But the point is, there's nothing new about a third floor in Marvin Gardens. These are six examples, there's probably others. Driving around, I can't always tell if somebody's got a living space in their attic or not, but, you know, these six clearly do. So if we want to launch into the discussion about height.
I'd like, I'd like, before you do that, I'd like you to touch upon what I was talking about in my opening, and that being, in terms of alternatives to what is proposed for the Chipmunks to pick up additional space. Obviously, they could do a full renovation and, and lift the, lift the property. They could, they could take this house down and build a new house, or they could do what they're doing. In terms of those three alternatives or those, those three options, and in, in, in an eye toward maintaining the integrity of Marvin Gardens and the purpose of the ordinance that includes third floors.
Excuse me, Chris. One, in, in that vein, did you ask, did you bring up that they could extend it to the backyard or they can't extend it to the backyard? Do they, they meet a coverage requirement? Is it, are they limited?
Peter said was they'd like to kinda maintain the yard.
No, I'm saying, do they, are they limited? They, they can't extend it to the backyard?
They can, they can certainly go to the backyard.
Okay. I just wanna know that that's another option.
Peter, in, in terms of those three options, in terms of the, the, working with the, within the existing footprint, so to speak, what option, and tell us why, meets the intent of the ordinance, which, which really speaks to third floors and not permitting third floors?
Well, I think there's a couple... Okay, obviously, we, we were choosing to do a third floor addition. One option, another option would be to obviously tear the house down, build a two-story house. In that scenario, the house would be higher. We could go another ten inches higher. Likely we would do that. If we built new, it's probably gonna be vinyl siding, maybe two stories, but it'd be bigger, gonna be out of character with the neighborhood in general. If we were to simply raise the existing building, yes, we'd need a variance for the third floor. The existing bill, if we were just to take the, the existing building and raise it to the, meet the minimum flood requirement now, it would be the same or slightly higher than what we're proposing. You know, if, if, you know, that, that obviously isn't what, something that we're trying to do, but, you know, if, if the Chipmunks wanted to raise the building, if that was an option, you know, we'd probably, we'd prefer variance for the, possibly for the, uh, third floor. So, the point is, the mass, whether you raise it or build a new or do the third floor addition, well, the third floor addition probably gives you the least amount of mass, because it's only a portion of the building that you're raising, as opposed to raising the entire thing. So, in terms of mass, I think this is actually the least increase. So, in terms of the height, in terms of feet, the height has always been controlled by this, which is the residential height regulating map. It's never been controlled by the ordinance itself. If you look at the ordinance, the text, it refers you to this. So what this says is, and this is height zone, which is D, we're allowed twenty-five feet above lowest floor elevation as defined. So, I guess my belief is that when they, when somebody wrote "as defined," whoever that was, they were referring to right here, where it says lowest floor elevation equals BFE plus three-foot freeboard for FEMA A8 zones, BFE plus two-foot freeboard for all other FEMA zones. We'd be in the BFE plus two feet. That's the way it's been done from as far back as I can remember. Essentially, what this map does is establish a maximum height for the roof. It doesn't actually say, nowhere in the ordinance is there actually, does it say you have a maximum building height? It says, this is as high as the roof can be at the peak. And then it says, well, you need at least a five-twelve pitch, and that helps maintain the, the mass of the building.
Peter, what you're, I think what you're referring to is, when you undertake renovations such as this and you're looking to provide the board with what the proposed height is, that height, according to the height regulating map, is taken from the BFE.
Correct.
Plus the freeboard, what's provided by the state and the city.
Correct.
Not what the existing floor is in the house. That's never been the way we've done it. It's always been from what the floor, floor would be if we were to build a new now.
Correct.
Thank you.
And this is the first instance, um, in my career where Rogers come along and say, "Well, we gotta measure it from a different point," meaning, meaning the existing floor.
So, are you saying that if we, what you're talking about, that there wanna be a height variance?
Correct.
Okay.
Peter, what, what you're saying is, the first time in your experience working here at Margate and with Roger or the other Roger, that you've been told or requested that height is taken with this project from the existing, from the floor of the existing house?
Yes.
That's the first time I've been asked, seen to do that as well.
Yes, and even on the other, the previous height regulating map, that just said, you know, it's somebody feed about BFE, because that's what we were using back then, but this one, uh, Vice and Sandy, and that's, that's what it says. So Roger, in his report, is referring to a definition that's in the ordinance itself, which is really a FEMA definition, and basically what it says is, well, this is habitable space and this isn't habitable space. And it was put in after Sandy, I think, because of people getting their grand money and things like that. So I don't think it was ever the intention of FEMA to write a definition that would then be used to regulate the height of a roof, you know, in Margate. So that's, I think, up to you guys, the board, to decide what datum you're gonna use to measure height from. And to me, I guess I've been pretty clear that this is what we've used for decades probably, and that's what we should be using here.
Because Pete, let me, let me touch on this. If, if in fact the board says, "No, we're gonna change it. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take height from the first floor of this house that was built in nineteen twenty-seven." Well, then you have X number of feet up to the BFE, which we really have to go up to the BFE, which really can't be considered. That can't be habitable, yet we're, yet we're, yet you're telling us to include that in our height evaluation.
Are you saying it's not habitable, that...
It wouldn't be, it, no, it's, under, under the flood law, flood regulations, it wouldn't be habitable.
Well, under the, on this house, though, when they're done, it will be habitable, correct?
Different, different point, Richard.
Okay.
But if you're saying, take the, take your height from the existing first floor, okay? Well, you can do that, but then according to the flood regulations, I can't use any of this that you've made me calculate into my height, because, because I'm not allowed to use anything below my BFE, yet this is included in, in my height, overall height. And that, that doesn't make sense. That, that's not what we've ever done. We've always started your height from your BFE, and all this is non-habitable. Don't make me take my height from the existing first floor, which is well below BFE, and then tell me that, "Yeah, you gotta do that, and this is non-habitable," if you follow. And that's, that's not, it's not how we've ever dimensioned height. It's not how we've ever considered height.
Yes.
I would think, Chris, that that terminology of what you're saying is kind of like a catch twenty-two, and the reason it's in there is because they want you to elevate because of Sandy. You can't use it as, and now, are you saying that you want us to take the twenty-nine datum? Or are you talking about the eighty-eight datum?
I think the problem is...
You said you were using the wrong datum. Which one are you talking?
It's not, it's not, it's not about twenty-nine or eighty-eight.
Because why would we use an old twenty-nine datum when we have the new eighty-eight?
Well, no, we're not saying that.
Saying use existing, use, use where the first floor is in an, in an old house. Use that. That's, that's your floor. We've never done that. Sorry.
Yes. I think that ultimately the problem comes down to is in the ordinance. On this regulating map, you've got one definition for lowest floor, and then in the new ordinance, you have a different one. So you've got two. Right? You gotta pick one, which one you're gonna use. So if you say, "Well, I'm gonna use the one that's, the ordinance says, the text that says the lowest floor is the lowest habitable floor." Then I come along and say, "Well, okay, I'll put the first floor at elevation twenty. That's my lowest floor. Then I can build, you know, twenty-five feet above that."
And you can't.
Right, so you have to decide what makes more sense here. And to me, this makes more sense, because, well, first of all, it's been around forever, and it just...
Defined forever.
There's no, there's no sort of correlation. There's nothing saying you should use the definition in the text of the ordinance and then add so many feet to it. It doesn't say that anywhere.
Can I, can I, to make this clear in my own head, so if they're allowed twenty-five feet, and you're saying because the seven feet is, and I'm making these numbers up, the seven feet is four feet below, so they can go twenty-nine feet over the first floor elevation? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying the point we used to be measuring from...
No, it's not what I'm asking. When the house is done, you're saying they can go, you can add another four feet because the floor, under the regulation, should be up here? The rule says it can't be more than twenty-five feet. Over what? So you're saying because the first floor should be up here, you can go twenty-five feet from there. So you end up with twenty-nine feet from the first floor, and it's okay?
The existing? Yes, ultimately, yeah.
So yes, that's, all right, well, I, I just wanna get it clear in my own head what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So, I guess you guys have to consider that, and, and I think you have to make a decision, you know, which way you're gonna go.
Roger, does the ordinance say anything about stories per se, as opposed to height?
Yes, the actual height regulation map that Peter's referring to for this zone is two habitable floors, two stories total.
Do you have a, your habitable floors?
Yes. Two stories. Obviously, we're here for a variance for at least the third floor portion.
That kinda makes the height question academic.
Turn your microphone off, please. Peter, if that's your interpretation, are you not asking for the height variance collectively?
If we would not, no, if, if, if the height were taken from the required BFE, we would not be, we, we would not need a height variance. If, if, if it's taken from the existing first floor, the existing floor of the house, if you were to walk into today, twenty-five feet from there, yes, we would need, we would need relief.
Are you asking the board to interpret that, or are you...
I'm just asking the board, you know, how, how's it done? I mean, we've always done it, that it's taken from the required BFE since Sandy. Height's taken from the required BFE since Sandy, not from the first floor, but I walk into your house, you know, your, your old house or your newer house.
But you'd still need relief for the third floor?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, we're not denying that.
So, yeah, it's not, not ready to feed stories. Stories is the opposite, right?
Yes. But getting back to the third floor, ultimately, our proposal is to add about thirty-nine inches to the height. I've already gone over, so we're raising the roof in that portion of the building, thirty-nine inches, which to me is, you know, it's basically that height. It's not significant. And I've already explained that if we were to tear it down and build a, we'd probably end up with a, a larger, taller house. Now, the addition, as I already mentioned, is twenty-three back, twenty-three feet back from the front of the house, which makes it thirty-five feet from the front property line. It maintains the roof lines of the existing house, and since it's set back so far, it would be barely noticeable from the street. But just a little bit upon the, the easement, which hasn't been mentioned. So currently, there's no legal parking on our lot or the neighbor's lot. There are, however, a couple of old garages. So this has been kinda used as a driveway over the years, but there's no legal easement. So if somebody decides to blow a fence here, it kinda cuts off the neighbor. So the neighbors are going to create an easement, so each one of them can access it, the rear of the property, which will gain two parking spaces on each lot, which will get, in theory, four cars off the, the street. There's already a curb cut, so you don't lose any parking on the street, so you're creating four parking spaces where previously there were none.
I'm sorry. You said the neighbors have agreed to that? That'll be a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all we have.
Anything from the board? Joe?
Yeah, Peter, would this, did you say this would be comparable to other heights of other properties that have been raised to a third floor? Would it be comparable to that?
Lower.
It'll be lower?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Would it be com, when you raise it, would it be comparable to other third-floor properties in that area?
Yes.
It won't be hot. It'll be comparable.
I didn't survey the neighborhood, but you can see some of these houses are pretty hot.
Joe, you mean when we build the addition, should we be permitted?
When you build the addition, if you're permitted, would you be comparable to other existing third-floor properties in the area?
There's, I think, clearly, I mean, there hasn't been a mad rush of people to raise houses in Marvin Gardens, just maybe a couple.
No, not really.
The reality is, they're older houses. They're loaded the ground. They'd be difficult to lift, and they're frankly just not really worth it in most cases. You've got a bunch of little discreet rooms. They aren't, you know, what people wanna necessarily buy nowadays. So, but if somebody was to entertain the idea of lifting their house, the height would be roughly the same as, or probably higher than what we're proposing for our addition.
Joe? It, it adds thirty-nine inches to what we're, to the height now.
Peter, would you go over that parking again? I didn't follow.
Right now, neither our lot nor the neighbor to the north has any legal parking on their site. There's an old garage back here on both properties attached, and I think, um, over the years, people could potentially drive up and down the alley, but there's no legal...
No legal mechanism that says...
Yeah, they can do that.
You can't block the center part, so if somebody can get to the back.
You could put, either, either party could put up a fence down the middle of the driveway.
Right.
That's, that's not how it's gonna be, like...
No, no, that's what hap, that's what it is now, but you're gonna change that, so...
Change it to leave the accessible portion in the middle.
And create two parking spots for each unit.
That's right.
Thank you.
No, there is no, there's nothing else. So where would those parts be?
Garage, garage. In front of the garage, in front of the garage. Stacked, two stacked, side by side.
But you're existing now.
No, but they're not, but the width of the driveway does, is not sufficient to do that.
We have to actually move a shower to create the one on our space, but the point is, even though there may be garages back there, there's no legal way to get to them.
The neighbor's deck is staying there, correct? The neighbor's deck that protrudes out into the driveway?
Yes.
And, and the existing house has a bump out also. So there's room for one car to go back to the two garages, correct?
Right, and the easement agreement will provide that. The center, the center area can't be blocked.
Center area can't be blocked, and you have to go back the driveway and then cut to one drive, one garage, or cut to the other garage.
Right.
And how many, and it's showing, there could be two cars back there next, in front of the garages, two cars, one for each house.
That's right, and one in the garage technically.
Wait, two for each house or one for each house?
One.
Garage, garage, space, space.
Yeah, if you could get in the garage, if, if the garage wasn't full.
So two, four spaces total?
That's right.
Four spaces.
Two for one house and one, two for the other house.
If there are two cars, if there's a car parked in that spot in the right-hand garage, like, in front of the right-hand garage, you'd question whether the car could get in that space.
Okay.
You gotta remember, a car's not as big as a parking space. It's several feet smaller.
Just trying to clean up what's there. Just trying to make it workable, usable.
And not be able to block it in the future.
That's right.
Is there any other questions from the board? I don't think there's anyone here from the public wants to speak, is there? Wait a minute. It looks like there's a lot of people from the public, and I would like to preface it. There, there's not a time limit, but it, would you sit down, please? There's not a time limit. I would like everyone that wants to speak to come up, but if what you have to say has already been said, I would like you to say, "I agree with what's previously been said." If you have a new point, okay. If you, if somebody's already said what you wanna say, still come up and say you agree with them, but don't rehash what's there, if that's okay. Man, would you like to come up and be sworn in?
Do I have to swear it again?
Yes, please wait.
Yeah, Carol Christensen.
Carol Christensen, what's your address, Carol?
One hundred South Osborne and eight South NASA.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
It seems to me that this thing about height, if you're talking about maintaining the integrity of Marvin Gardens, then you would, you're ta, it's, this height thing's being taken out of context. If all the other houses are being measured at, at the elevation that the, the original houses were built there, then that's how they should be measured. And nobody's raising the houses because that's an historical neighborhood of Margate. So, you know, it's, it's a design review thing as well as, as a, a board variance thing. Either you're gonna stick to the rules and maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, or you're gonna start giving variances all over the place. There's another place to put the space, and that's in the backyard. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next. Please, sir.
You.
Okay.
Please state your name and be sworn in.
Uh, Bill Cotter, Twenty Circle Drive.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, there's several points I wanna raise, one of which relates to the drawing or the pictures they took of the, the various houses that are, the first lovely house on the left is mine, and that, uh, third story is really an attic... And that third story is really an attic bump out. There were no variances ever asked for that. We did a $300,000 renovation, never went up or out. Stayed within the measurements of Marvin Gardens. Most of those other houses are either attic bump outs or are the houses that were built at that... In the 2010, 2008 era that caused the Marvin Gardens group to try to form a committee to try to stop this type of construction from going on in the future. And as some of you may recall, around 2011, 2012, a group of the Marvin Gardens residents got together, talked to the commissioners to see if there was a way we could even add additional restrictions to those two that we already have on now, one of which was that third-story addition. The commissioners and the planning board agreed that if a survey was taken and the majority of the owners wanted some additional restrictions, then they would consider it. Not that they would do it, but they would consider it. So a survey went out to all of the owners within Marvin Gardens. Approximately 120 owners. Of those 120 owners, about 80% responded. Of the 80% that responded, 90% of those respondents said they either wanted to increase the restrictions or they wanted to keep them the same. They did not want to eliminate them. Only 10% wanted to eliminate the restrictions. And in fact, what they're asking for is to the elimination of a restriction. The irony of this is, one of those that wanted to increase the restrictions are the applicants that are here today. One of the other things that I think is surprising to me, and I've been here all night to listen to the variety of discussions, this is the first discussion I've seen where, in fact, there was like a veiled threat here, where if the owners couldn't get what they wanted, then they had the right to knock the building down and put a vinyl siding. And that's true. They do. They have the right to knock this building down and put a vinyl siding. That's one of the things we're trying to prevent in the future. And in fact, I would think it's time for the homeowners again in Marvin Garden to get back together and try to prevent this kind of effort that's going on here today to be presented again. As you may, as the planning commission knows, this is the third... This is the fourth time that this application was submitted. This is the first time that we've actually been able to get before you to voice our objections to this effort here. In fact, I would ask that anybody that's in the audience that is against this, just to simply raise their hand. Against? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cotter, any questions? Which house is yours on that...
The first one, 20th Circle Drive.
Which one? Which photograph is it?
The first one on the left, top left.
And you had an attic in that house before your $300,000 renovation?
That was the original design of the building. That was the original design.
I didn't ask you that. I asked you, did you have an attic on that property before your $300,000 renovation?
Yes.
What was in the attic?
An attic.
Storage?
Storage.
Okay, what about after your $300,000 renovation?
Storage.
Okay, did you change the...
No. I did not.
You're like... Like you're clairvoyant.
I am. I know what you're gonna say. Did I change anything within the attic or the bump out? And the answer is no.
Okay, so it's still storage. It's not habitable in any...
Correct.
Correct? Is there a bathroom up there?
No.
How about the other bump outs, attic bump outs? Do you know... Are any of those habitable?
The only one that's habitable is the one that was habitable at the time it was constructed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cotter.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, in line with what you're asking, I just want to ask Roger, because I don't know. In the new proposed master plan, is there any changes proposed? Any less restrictions for Marvin Gardens? No, the... It was very clear by all the subcommittee meetings attended that that area was to be hands-off. That's what's being... That's the new master plan? That's the new master plan. All right, I just wanted to clear that up. Does anyone have anything different? Is... Anything... We can't... It's not official when you raise your hand, so you have to come up and be sworn in, but... So come up and be sworn in.
I just have some general comments.
No, you can't.
Okay.
What's your name?
Mark Lovett.
What's your address?
My mother owns a home at 8 West Drive. Talk writing on her behalf.
What's your address?
I live in... Live in Venter, 16 North Sacramento.
Okay, now you need to be sworn in. Raise your hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. These houses are, in some cases, nearly 100 years old. And about five years or so, Marvin Gardens will be celebrating its centennial. And of course, there's been different changes over the years, but what you see as the structure of the area, that is the demography, the geography, was intended to be a certain way. There was no intention on the plan of the architects to have three stories. It was built in mind that you would be two stories. That's the whole point I'm trying to make. That's the intention. That's the historical heritage of the houses there. And that's basically my point about the whole matter. The idea is you're... The intention of the master plan is to preserve the integrity of the historical architecture of Marvin Gardens, then any kind of variance that denudes from that is a threat to that integrity.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. State your name.
Phyllis Sanguini.
The microphone bends down.
Sorry about that. 2 West Drive. Marvin Gardens.
Your name again, I'm sorry.
Phyllis Sanguini. Italian.
You okay with that, Joanna?
Sanguini. S-A-N-G-U-I-G-N-I.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do. I agree with everything I say... They say. Having come there at the age of 12 and seeing Marvin Gardens...
10 years ago?
1950. Anyway, I want to say, as the one gentleman said here, the integrity of Marvin Gardens has to be preserved. He said it himself. And that's what you have to keep in your heart. The integrity of Marvin Gardens must be preserved. Mark said it best when he said the designs of the building were two stories, stucco, French Renaissance. The design of that area and the ambiance of that area is unlike any in this city. Like unlike any. In 1950, when those buses came through, they're sightseeing buses, it was an honor to have the people of wherever come to our area to see what we had, to destroy it and make it three stories. You people have a lot in your heart to consider. And that's what I'm trying to appeal to you tonight. Not the variances, not the rules, not the regulations. The ambiance of the gardens must be preserved.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Your name, sir?
Robert Chipitz.
We know your address.
Right.
Can you please raise your right hand? You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right, yes.
Thank you.
I think we're being painted here as something we're not. We love Marvin Gardens. We love the integrity of the community. That's what attracted us to a house that, quite frankly, was an eyesore when we bought the house. It was a mess. The real estate agent wouldn't even go in the house. It was a nightmare, and I think we've created a very nice house now. We want to make some minor changes, not to change much, but to add a little room for grandchildren. It's kind of... That's all we want to do. It's nothing major. Just some nice, small changes. And that's what we always said. We want to make small changes. It was never a threat that we would tear the house down. That was an obvious option we have, but was never mentioned that we would do that. We have no intention of doing that. We want to keep the integrity of the neighborhood, which is what attracted us to the house, and also the backyard, which I would like to keep. It's a beautiful backyard. I like it. So I'd rather not have to build there. I just want to say that, you know, I just would like our intentions understood. And thank you for your considerations.
Thank you. Next. State your name and address, please.
Nancy Roach, 9th Circle Drive.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony... Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My husband and I bought a full-time home in Marvin Gardens 14 years ago. And it was driving into the gardens and seeing that neighborhood as it was that made us decide Margate was where we wanted to retire. We bought an as-is house, as the Chipitzes did. And we have done everything that we can afford to do to keep it in character and make it the comfortable home that we feel it is. I agree 100% with Bill Cotter's statement. I was part of the group that worked with him. But in addition to that, I have two other concerns. And one is that I don't want to see a third story become the first domino to fall, that then it's easier for the next family to say, we just want to bump up a little bit because already Sandy has taken a lot from the character of our neighborhood. And the homes that were demolished even before Sandy are a detriment to our character. But we just want to say, can we stop it here? And my other concern is the parking issue. We two have a shared driveway where we have neighbors that cooperate. We pull in and pull over, but we both can't put our minivans in there. And more bedrooms mean more cars, just as you said. And the way Marvin Gardens is designed with our island's visibility is often a problem. Car speed, which is often a problem. And they're just... On the three big holiday weekends, the people who live there can't find places to park their cars. So anything we do to increase from the standard two-story design and go to three stories further just implicates the congestion in our little enclave that we'd like to keep.
I have a question. The house raising that's been done in the neighborhood, are you okay with that? Or is that something that's out of the ordinary?
Well, I wish it didn't have to happen, but I... You know, Sandy put a big kibosh on all the... All the... What we were trying to do, bringing neighbors together to say, we want to preserve Marvin Gardens. And then Sandy happened, and everybody is dealing with flood issues and insurance issues and thinking about the future and their property. And it's not the same cohesion we had before. But I can't tell somebody that you want to... You can't raise your house if you want to preserve it. But there's still... The guidelines were written back with the master plan that Marvin Gardens was going to be a two-story development. And I would like to see that zoning ordinance upheld.
Thank you. Next. Ma'am? Ma'am? No, you can go. You've been jumping out of your seat. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would, actually. Lino, sir. 36 West Drive. I live and share the driveway with the people here.
Do you swear affirm this?
Yeah, I swear.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give?
I do. And I am jumping out of my skin. You're appropriately right. Because I'm listening to this, and believe me, my grandparents lived on the corner of Raleigh and Atlantic, and I came here my whole life. And I now live in a house just like they did in Marvin Gardens. There's wasn't. Mine was. It's always been a dream of mine. Finally, last year, I got to move in. To my dismay, as my husband and I have been looking for a home in Marvin Gardens, we have seen more houses knocked down and built up from the bottom, on stilts, vinyl siding and all, that are way taller than what my neighbors want to do.
Could you stand the microphone, please?
Okay. They live in a typical Marvin Gardens house. And they want to preserve Marvin Gardens the way that it's always been. They don't want a vinyl-sided house. You guys are not thinking about these people and what they want to do. You should have been thinking about this when you let all those houses come in that are way taller than what they want to do and way out of style. There's houses in that neighborhood that people... And I don't want to point anyone out. There's a house there that looks like a prison. It's not high, but it certainly has not... They probably didn't need a variance to do what they did. And they degraded our beautiful neighborhood. These people want to keep a house in the integrity that it was supposed to be and allow for a growing family. I don't want them to move out. I don't want someone to come next door to me and build one of those giant McMansions that you talked about on stilts. I want them to stay there and build this unobtrusive addition so that Marvin Gardens can stay the way that it is. You're focusing on the wrong people. You're focusing on the wrong thing. You are allowing these big houses to be raised, and they want, what, 39 inches? That you're not even going to be able to see? It's not going to block anybody's view. If anybody's view gets blocked, it's mine. And I don't care. I live next door to them, and I don't want somebody to buy it and knock it down. You guys are not thinking. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Michael Newman. I live at 32 West Drive.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Newman. I live on... At 32 West Drive, lot number 67, just on the other side of the Chipitzes. And we bought in 2014, and it was an absolute fixer-upper special. Nothing had been done to that house in 28 years. And we're starting to put money in it and...
Your house or the Chipitzes' house?
Our house.
Okay.
He just said that he... When he bought, he had to fix his house up too. And that's what we're all trying to do. We're all trying to increase the value of our houses while we maintain the neighborhood. Minor changes like that will not make any difference in this neighborhood. And there is quite a bit of variation in all the houses in Marvin Gardens. There's nice ones, and there's some others that need a lot of work. But what he's proposing makes no... Is not going to make any difference in the neighborhood at all. Nobody's even going to see it. So I support his change.
Thank you. Next.
Cindy Gerson, 38 West Drive. I'm two doors down. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Okay.
I wanted to just say that I agree with what's been said. But in addition to that, that we bought our house, I guess, in 2011. These houses are a labor of love. I give a lot of credit to the Chipitzes and also to Peter Weiss. We've spoken to architects who have told us not to waste our money. That our house, you know, is a night... Would be a nightmare to raise and become compliant. It's... You're stuck in just, you know, a space where it's untenable. I had an architect tell me to save my money and knock it down. I also have a crazy pie-shaped lot, so I'll be here for variances. And there's probably not a lot in Marvin Gardens that wouldn't need variances. These lots are bizarre and, you know, are not compliant with what you want today. I commend the Chipitzes for staying there. They're awesome neighbors. Awesome neighbors are not easy to come by. And I also give them a lot of credit for doing right by Marvin Gardens by trying to make it compliant for what we need today. There is no parking problem on our block and where we are on West Drive. In fact, we only get overflow from the other places in Marvin Gardens on the three weekends of a year, this week being one of them. And then people park on Winchester. There is no problem with parking ever. And that's all I have to say. I really do hope that we prove it because otherwise, we will wind up with another monstrosity, and that is a shame.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure. Could you come back, please?
Sorry, just one quick question, because I'm hearing a few supporters. My question would be, do you support three-story homes in all of Marvin Gardens? Or just this home?
Well, first of all, it's not a complete third story. As we know, in all of Margate, it's only a half of whatever the second-floor square footage is. I completely support it, especially... What I don't understand is how someone was able to do $300,000 worth of renovations and not make their house flood compliant. That would have thrown up in the air another 10 feet.
Just let's focus on that.
Okay, well, that's...
So you would have no problem with all the homes within your neighborhood having a third or half?
Not if they were able to keep the integrity of the exteriors, which is not even on the books to... People can do whatever they want. They can make a castle. They can make it purple. So it doesn't even matter what people do. So I do support it. I'd be better off seeing more of a streetscape and general design of the exteriors preserved.
Hold on, Chris. Someone... And you do realize that if we turn around here tonight and say, yeah, we're going to give everybody third floors, and then in four or five years with the title flooding, now everybody has to elevate. or five years with the title flooding, now everybody has to elevate. Now you're going to have a community that's going to be...
You should take a bus toward a C aisle. C aisle looks absurd. I mean, those houses are literally 50, 70 feet in the air. I'm well aware of how drastically it can change. And I also am aware of how every single solitary new house that comes up, and we come down summer after summer, this is our 11th summer down here, it's a crisis. The houses look so identical, and it's really sad. I mean, I used to go to Longport as a child, and the character is just gone. And they spend a lot more money on their facades here than we do. They're just flat, blank, and I guess because everybody wants five or six bedrooms. The Chipitzes are willing to smash their family into four bedrooms. I don't think that that's an outrageous request. And they should be commended.
Ma'am, can I just follow up on what Ms. Hess was asking? What Ms. Hess was asking is, are you, and finally, we're going to ask this question. Are you okay with everybody in Marvin Gardens having a third, wait, wait, having a third floor or on a case-by-case basis, depending on where Alex lives?
I think it should be on a case-by-case basis, obviously, on the architecture and how it integrates into the community. This was an excellent job by Peter Weiss.
Thanks.
Ma'am?
Judy Fennlin, 23 East Drive. I just wanted to say that...
Wait, wait, you need to swear.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
The desire of people to expand their homes and their spaces to accommodate more family, we've seen that here tonight and living in Marvin Gardens. Trying to expand your home in an historic district is basically a conflict. We're trying to maintain that historic district. People who, I feel that people who come to move here and choose to live here have to look ahead and look at how much space they want and not try to redesign a few years down the road. Actually, if you look at many homes today, they have what you might call traditional exteriors, porches and shutters and things that make them look like a traditional house. But because of the materials used, they look like brand-new homes. No one would ever mistake them for a historic house. And I think, I think the integrity of our community is what everyone likes about it. It's the only thing that really makes the homes valuable in Marvin Gardens. And I think, I think once you start to, if you start to say, "Well, okay, we have to loosen up here," I think the entire neighborhood will lose its character. As to the homes that are already big, that people have been complaining about, well, they were tear downs. They were tear downs. And I do know, I do not feel that everyone is going to tear down their house to build more rooms, because I don't think that's why they moved to Marvin Gardens in the first place.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Amy Chipitz, 34 West Drive.
Ms. Chipitz, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I think a lot of people moved to Marvin Gardens because of the character, because it's beautiful, and we love the architecture. And I always wanted an old home. And I love that I live in a house that was built in 1923. We have a house in Philadelphia that was built in 1986, and it does nothing for me, and I love my home in Marvin Gardens. We moved in in 2009, three daughters, and now we have three strapping sons-in-laws and four grandchildren, and it's very crowded. And I don't want to move, not just because it's an adorable house, but because people move to Marvin Gardens for those backyards. You cannot get a backyard anywhere. I mean, we looked around. My husband said, "Let's look around. Let's move. Let's see if we can get a bigger house somewhere else." And they don't have any backyards, and we love the backyard. We love being out back. We go, we spend more time out back than we do at the beach. We just love being at the house. So I just want to say that I agree with my neighbors who are opposed to us. I want Marvin Gardens to stay looking exactly like it does. And that's why I contacted Peter, and I think he did a great job. What he designed is totally unobtrusive. Nobody will see it. The people who are most affected are my proximate neighbors who are all here, my two next-door neighbors and then my next-door neighbor to her. And they are all totally supportive. I think we need to go case by case in Marvin Gardens, because newer people are moving in. Now, I know Mr., I don't remember his last name, the first gentleman who spoke, said that I supported keeping Marvin Gardens original. I don't quite know if I sent something in when that petition was going around. And maybe I did say, "Yeah, I think Marvin Gardens should stay looking original." But the reality is, my neighbors and I, we've moved in in the past 10 years before these ordinances were passed. They're younger people moving in with younger families with babies. And I think fewer people are going to move in if they don't have the space. And what we're doing is just asking for one bumped-up room in our attic so that we can have space for our grandchildren. We're not changing anything. We're not doing anything to destroy the integrity of the neighborhood. And I really think that we do need to think about it case by case. I think that if people went, you know, the ordinance is made, was made because people feel very strongly about keeping things the way they want it to remain. But I think we need to look into the future, and we need to see what, you know, what the needs are of families who are moving in, and take it case by case and not just throw out the baby with the bathwater here. And that's it.
Thank you.
So I hope you will consider our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next.
Good evening.
Your name?
My name is Barbara Pacman. I live at 7401 Ventnor Avenue.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give?
I swear.
Thank you.
Jimmy, you're the only one that I recognize. I've been a resident, well, but I mean, I used to be very active in the city when Bill Ross was mayor. I have lived in Marvin Gardens for 53 years. I just want to say that the reason Marvin Gardens is desirable place to live is location. Location is everything. Location for business, location for schools, location to the Ventnor boardwalk. You can walk everywhere from Marvin Gardens. I agree with the gentleman who spoke first. It is an ideal neighborhood. And every, I concur with everything Bill said. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
She's against it.
No, you've spoken.
Oh, I can't speak to you yet?
I didn't say that. I said, "I'll let other people speak."
I didn't know she was there. Sorry.
Hi. I'm Bobby Trottenberg, 31 East Drive.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that Bill said and Nancy said and many of my other neighbors.
I don't know the people's names. Are you for it or against it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm against this variance.
Thank you.
And I would like to add that ours is one of the three homes in the neighborhood that have been raised due to flooding. We went to a great deal of trouble and expense to make the final result look like it's been there forever. The house next door to us was torn down after Sandy, and actually, Peter Weiss designed something for that. Same thing with the house behind us. So we've experienced both. We've experienced the elevations and the tear downs. And we're still kind of reeling from all of it. The neighborhood is not at all the way it was 10 years ago when we moved in and fell in love with it. We've lost our trees, we've lost some homes, we've lost some neighbors. But the real issue with this is setting the precedent for a third floor, particularly since it's only more likely that houses are going to have to be elevated in the future. And if we start allowing third floors on top of homes that are elevated, it's going to look like a neighborhood of skyscrapers, not like the charming historic neighborhood that we all love and want to preserve.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Do you live on, close to Fredericksburg?
Yes. We back up to Fredericksburg.
I saw your house, one raised and one new, one next to it, correct?
Yes, we're the raised one.
They're both two stories, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else new? New? Mr. Sewell? Are you familiar with testifying before a boards, Mr. Sewell?
So much so that I only use one name. Sewell, 22 West Drive.
Can I ask one favor?
Yes.
Would you say Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
More respectful than the mayor.
John, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, indeed.
Thank you.
26 years ago, I walked into Jim's office, and the one thing he impressed upon me was that I was going to be in a historic district and to respect the integrity, the quality, and the character of the home, and not to deviate, if possible. And I honored that request. When the new, when Roger came in, one of the very first questions I asked Rogers, "When the new master plan comes out, will the special height restriction for Marvin Gardens be retained?" Because under Roger Rubin, the neighbors got together and militated to preserve the height of the gardens. This was a, this is not something new. These people didn't come out of the woodwork, you know, with a vendetta against these folks. These folks are fine folks, as far as I'm concerned. However, the desire to prevent third floors is a noble effort to preserve the quality and character of Marvin Gardens. I think this should be a paramount consideration. I would have directed that question to Roger when he took over for Roger Rubin, had it not been an overriding concern, even before Chris put the application in for the petitioners. I think it's very important that this board try to maintain the quality, character of Marvin Gardens. It's essential. And I think, you know, if you want to willy-nilly grant variances, it's a slippery slope. It's even faster than dominos. So my petition to this board tonight, please, please, try to maintain the character of the gardens. I think it's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Bonnie Duba for Circle Drive.
If you can bend the microphone down.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I'm relatively new to Marvin Gardens, and my house is the center one on the top. I have a three-story home. When we moved in, our neighbors were very endearing, but some basically were second owners. We did not build the home, and they said that we were in the illegal home, and they weren't quite nice to us because our house wasn't Marvin Gardens appropriate. We have a couple houses that are for sale in the neighborhood now. And as a nosy neighbor, I've gone through the open houses, and the younger people that are coming in the neighborhood now are saying, "Oh, we need to do this. Oh, it doesn't have this. Oh." So the properties really are going to be torn down. So if we're really, really strict with regulation, and I think it should be house to house, and I'm very proud of my house, I do have to say, because I think the previous owners build it not too obtrusive, and I think that it has a beautiful, charming curbside. But at the end of the day, it's not an original Marvin Gardens house. But this family is trying to maintain the house. They just want a third story. And again, it's a tough call. The neighborhood is beautiful. I love it. I absolutely love it. But I'd rather see them put a third story on than them tear it down, just like the two houses that are for sale now. Clearly, people are like, "Oh, well, what size house can we put on this lot if we tear this house down?" So I'd rather maintain the neighborhood and the beauty and allow people to keep up with their houses and improve them and enjoy them. And when we bought the house, we were not even at all aware of what we were getting into. We had no idea. We knew it was historic. We knew it had beautiful signage. We had beautiful trees. We had beautiful plantings, beautiful people. But we had no idea that there was regulations, because no one disclosed that to us. At the end of the day, there's nothing I want to change. I'm happy, but I think people should be allowed to make some changes that aren't going to really, you know, impact people significantly. Their neighbors, their initial neighbors are agreeing. Again, and what makes me really nervous is that the houses that are for sale are going to be torn down. So I think there needs to be this formal understanding of, as a group, as a neighborhood, what are we really, what can we do? But to do something that the height is not going to be significantly obtrusive, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's going to be significant at all. And they're maintaining the stucco, and they're maintaining the house, and they're maintaining the yard and the lawn, and they're not like totally cementing over the house. You know, people do that. They really want to keep it as nice as they can. So I just, you know, it's crazy, but you know, I inherited that house. We know we're the second owners, and people are like not happy with us, and we're the second owners, so it's a difficult scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Trottenberg, 31 East Drive. I just want to say...
Wait. Mr. Trottenberg, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Bonnie's a good friend of mine, and she is correct. There are a couple houses that are for sale. But I, I'm not a builder, but I don't believe somebody's going to buy a house for $700,000 as a tear down in Marvin Gardens. But I could be wrong. But I just feel that I would like to keep it exactly the way it is and as best as we can, and I would hope that everybody would as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Wait, wait, let other people speak first before you speak a second time.
Phyllis Cotter, 20 Circle Drive.
Ms. Cotter, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I do. I just wanted to address the issue of grandchildren. I have two children, and they each have two children, so I have four grandchildren. I have a three-bedroom house. So when everybody comes, the children sleep in the living room. I have two couches and two blow-up mattresses. So you can accommodate grandchildren for as often as they come without adding on. Also, as far as this house, there are two neighbors that added on to the back of their homes that have yards, just like this 34 West Drive, and they put on two stories, and it accommodated them fine. So there is the option of going out the back. And as far as Marvin Gardens and labor of love, Mike Richmond was our general contractor.
Uh-oh.
And Mike knows how much love we put into our house. I mean, really, it could have been a tear down, but people that buy in Marvin Gardens love the homes, and we did put $300,000 into it. Right? Thank you.
I don't remember that. Wait, wait, wait. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Okay.
You're still under oath, Ms. Chipitz.
Mr. Patterson, I don't appreciate, I have some displeasure with the way you've addressed me a few times tonight in a disrespectful way, and that could be interpreted as a means of suppressing a local taxpayer. And I don't appreciate it and don't expect to be spoken to that like that in a local public meeting. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm very concerned about the complexion of Margate and the architecture, et cetera, and I'm active in it. And I'm doing an interview with the press soon. I don't like the way you spoke to me.
Thank you. Next. Ma'am? You wanted to speak again?
Yeah. What I want to say, Lynn Ozer, still swear. Lynn Ozer, still swear. I never realized that all these rules and regulations took place. I don't understand, but someone just mentioned something that I think is a great idea. To preserve this neighborhood the way that it is and to understand that people are going to want to make changes, it has to be done on a one-to-one basis. I commend people that had to knock down their houses because of Sandy and build it up and tried to keep it looking the same way. But their houses are taller than... I commend people that had to knock down their houses because of Sandy and build it up and tried to keep it looking the same way. But their houses are taller than the ones that have been here. These people don't want to tear their house down. They want it to blend in and look the same. So I think that the case, I'm just here to say that I think you should look at each of these in a case-by-case basis. And I think that maybe the people in this room should look at it on a case-by-case basis, because what they want to do is preserve Marvin Gardens the way that it was, the way that they want it to be. They don't want it to change and look different. And if it's a third-floor thing, you have to give everybody a chance to do what they need to do. But these people want to do the right thing by all of you. They agree with everybody here. They want it to be the same, and so they're asking for, what is it, 39 inches?
Thank you.
I just think that you want to take it on a case-by-case basis and know that they do not want to mess up Marvin Gardens.
Thank you. Mrs. Chippits, this will be the last one. Mrs. Chippits, you have something to say?
Thank you. I just wanted to correct what the gentleman said before about two houses for sale for $700,000 that wouldn't be tear downs. I know for a fact that one's been for sale for over a year, not moving at all, and it's un, it's in the 500s, and the other one is in the 500s, and they just lowered the price. So these, there aren't houses for sale for $700,000, and I just wanted to correct that.
All right, public portion's closed. Chris, do you have anything?
No.
Any, any other questions from the board?
I just, I have one question.
Go ahead.
For, um, Jim. So what is the BFE there? What's the base flood elevation here? Is it 12?
Nine.
Is it 12?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine plus three.
Right. So it's, so it's 12. So you, your, your first floor, if you tear it-
Eleven. No, it's not. It's, it's AE nine plus two is 11.
All right, so it's 11. Okay, so if you tear your house down and build a new house, is it 25 feet above 11?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
That's Roger. Yes. Yeah.
Anything else from the board? Would you bear the motion?
We started to come to some consensus on how we're measuring height. I know that that was a while ago, but we went back and forth.
Doesn't have to be, but I agree with you. That's what it is. I don't understand what the attorney and maybe that they say it's never been that way, but I've never seen one where we didn't measure from the existing floor.
I understand Peter and Chris's point, and, and the ordinance is in conflict to a certain degree. However, but Lang is code. Height of the building, defined as the vertical distance above the lowest floor elevation to the level of the highest point of the roof surface. Finished floor elevation, the minimum elevation which a structure's lowest floor must be elevated or floodproof to in accordance with state or community floodplain management regulations for the city of Margate. Finished floor elevation is FEMA A8 zones, we're three feet above BFE, and for all other FEMA zones, two feet above BFE. B, C lowest floor. At a lowest floor, the lowest floor of a building, including a basement or any other enclosed area which, which is or may be used for permanent or temporary occupation by humans or non-finished enclosures such as a crawl space, entryway, inner garage, serving a private residence, which is usable, usable solely for building access, storage, and/or parking, and is not considered the lowest floor of a building, provided that such enclosure is constructed in compliance with all applicable design standards NJG, NJAC. References to the low, elevation of the lowest floor expresses lowest floor elevation, LFE. C, C finished floor elevation. Takes you in a circle. I'm just basi, this is what my interpretation is. I mean, I try to find a way to accommodate them, actually. And if they had, if they got the third-floor variance tonight, two years down the road, they want to elevate it, they need a height variance.
That just means it triggers a height variance, so everyone understands. So we need a motion for we need a motion for C variance relief to permit a habitable third story, which is not permitted in the zoning district. Uh, a height variance, to not exceed, to exceed the maximum permitted height, but not by more than 10%. A waiver from the requirement of submitting a survey, because Roger mentioned that in his report, with the following conditions, that the applicant shall supply a flood certification showing the exact location of the first floor, and an as-built survey showing building height is less than 10% of the maximum permitted when measured from the first floor. And, uh, all other conditions set forth in Roger McLaren's report reissued through May 25, 2017, including that proposed access easement as shown on the plans.
For the driveway?
For the driveway.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Who's second?
Jim.
Jim.
Tom Collins.
Long evening, a lot of testimony. I think what we really have to look at here is the fact that what we do tonight and every night in the planning board affects the city of Margate for the next 50 to 100 years. I'm so tired of imaginary lines and what if I tore this down or did that down. If you were going to do that, do it. But don't come in and say, "Well, we could do this." In this case here, we have a very historic gardens, and the only actual part of the Marvin Gardens that's historic is the gardens. That's why the houses aren't regulated. But we have an established community that people go into, want to be into, and there are other options. You do have land in the back. You don't choose to use it. But I don't think that we should set a precedent making a third-floor revision just to accommodate so you can have a little bit nicer yard, which affects everybody else. I think we need to keep the character of Margate intact. And if we do give a third-floor variances, and in five years, the city makes us raise up, by not being flood compliant, you're hurting the city of Margate. It costs in FEMA and ta, and flood insurance, which gets prorated to everybody. So the whole intent of the law is to get everybody to elevate, so we're all on the same page. So I vote no.
Clem Moslaski?
He votes what?
No.
The other day, I again drove slowly all around Marvin Gardens looking for where supposedly third floors already exist.
Clem, even with a microphone, I can't hear you. Would you pull the microphone closer, please? There you go. I can hear you now.
Well, that's good. It was one house in particular I did notice that had an obvious third floor on it. And it simply looked totally out of place amongst all the other houses. If, if we approve this third floor, we'd be setting a terrible precedent. This place is so unique. We're, we're formed with history. It's one of the few parts of Margate that still maintains any character. The rest of the town's being flooded with architectural garbage. I, I have to vote no on this application.
Rich Patterson?
Uh, I also have to vote no. Uh, I also support all the neighbors here, both pro and against, in that if you want changes to Marvin Gardens, you are the ones with your groups that you form, that the planning board would be glad to listen to, the city fathers would be glad to listen to, and if you do want changes, more or less, I support that. I didn't realize I was suppressing your speech when you came up. If I didn't let anybody speak long enough, I apologize, but I don't understand why I was suppressing anyone's speech. I tried to let everyone on both sides have all the, say everything they did. So if I offended anybody or you did, if I stopped you from speaking, then I apologize. But I still vote no on this application.
Jim Gallantino?
I don't know how many times we had discussions about the ru, the height over 26 years. I know Roger and I, Roger Rubin and I had this discussion a number of times, and that's why we came up with the 25-foot with higher and gruel back in 2006. We really wanted to keep it low. We didn't want third floors in Margate then, and it looks like now. I mean, 90% of the, well, 75% of the audience is against it. And I think, uh, Roger McLaren would agree with Roger Rubin on this, that we really didn't want third floors then, and I don't think we want third floors now. I'd vote no.
Marco Kubernolty?
Um, I can appreciate what the honors are doing and the design that Mr. Weiss did, which was not obtrusive, but I have to agree with the other board members to maintain the integrity of the gardens, to keep it a two-story community that it is, so I have to say no to the application.
Craig Palmisano?
I do feel, uh, for both sides. They both have issues that they're concerned with. The master plan has come out and has backed the Marvin Gardens group by, by, by limiting two stories. And, um, I, I've seen driving through there. I've seen a house that was raised that's two stories. I saw a brand-new house that's two stories. It's elevated about five, five or six feet up the ground. It looks great. It, it's in keeping with the other houses in, in the neighborhood. So I, I also have to vote with the 80% of the people who are against it. I vote no.
Mike Richmond?
I think if it was just a case of the height, I wouldn't be, uh, too opposed to it, because, you know, people, if you tear your house down, you got to build it to elevation 11 or 12, and it's going to be, you know, higher. If you raise your house, it's going to be higher. But a long time ago, we said that we weren't going, we didn't want, um, third floors in Marvin Gardens. And, you know, if you live there and, and you bought the house and you kind of hopefully knew that that was the case, then so I'd be a song and a vote no, so.
Application fails zero to seven.
Uh, we have other, we have other business? Yes. Roger? Yeah. Yeah, we're going to take it five, all right, just, just until the room clears, two minutes. Roger? Thank you, Board Chairman. Uh, as you're aware, the board appointed a subcommittee. Pete, you might want to hang after this.
Pete, what'd you say? Pete, what'd you say?
He's thirsty. Anyhow, going back to some minor ordinance changes that we are considering, and we requested to look at, one being item D. It's either highlighted, bold-faced, or in red. I ran out of toner. Then I ran out of highlighter, so I had to so there we go. Basically, as it reads now, machinery shall be housed and a noise-reduction structure shall be set back at least five feet from the rear yard and 10 feet from the side property line. We've been allowing, in certain cases- Page one? Okay. All showers shall have drainage at the top of the page.
Yes.
Go to D. Sometimes this is very difficult to achieve on these newer homes where they're shoving these pools in. And we've been allowing them, in certain cases, to go inside a garage, as long as they don't interfere with the parking space. However, running into the caveat, they technically, they don't meet the side yard setback. But the intent of the ordinance, noise reduction, noise reduction, that to me is trumps anything from the side. The side yard setback requirements is for noise. Sometimes you can't achieve that. So if you're less than a side yard and rear yard setbacks, we should allow it to be in a pool or shed that's permanent, as long as it doesn't interfere with the parking space. That's how we discuss it, right, Clem?
But if it's in a legal garage, then it becomes legal.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the setback.
Here's the setback. You've got an 18-inch setback on, in the dome.
Right.
It's a gas unit. It's got the 18-inch.
It has to comply with- Whatever. We're saying if it's in a garage, we're going to accept that as not worry about the setback. We're all in agreement there, so we don't need to go on from that. Pool equipment machinery may be mounted within a detached garage and not be required to meet the setback requirements, provided that the parking space is maintained and the construction meter exceeds all construction code requirements. Yes. They, they have to. They won't, they won't get a permit.
That term detached, that can be a sticky one, because the way we're attached, if a roof actually touches the building, it's no longer detached. That's what we saw tonight.
Right. They, it'll take detached, it'll put garage. Is that all right? We'll call it garage, Clem, instead of detached.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Going down to section K. Why are we only looking at these highlights? Is everything else the same? Everything else is the same. Okay. Go ahead. Where we discussed swimming pools, and what I did is I, I added in boldface, highlighted, or in red. All swimming pools shall maintain a minimum of three-foot clearance from the water's edge outward from the pool to any vertical structure or at or above grade.
I actually said-
Wait, wait, that, I'm talking.
Clem, I said it should be just three-foot egress on all sides, period. Instead of obstruction. That's better.
Well, obstruction is a, is a column or a pillar. I mean-
I, I, I like, I, I like-
Not if there's nothing there.
The idea is to get three-foot clearance around the entire pool. Minimum. Right. So this says nothing can be within that three-foot area. Right. Fine. Going down to the last one, section L. I think we ought to return to the fence surrounding swimming pools and hot tubs, and spa should be no less than five feet and no more than six feet above grade. I thought you didn't want the six-foot fences towards the front. I thought we were just going to a flat five. We could, but then you wouldn't have that problem. Remember, we had a problem with the six-foot was coming out. Was it a side yard or not a side yard with a six-foot fence? There is other language in, in the ordinance where I can, I can, I have discretion, and so does Jimmy, that where the six-foot can stop. But this way, the people that just put a brand-new five-foot fence in, in their backyard don't have to get a variance for a six-foot fence to put a pool in. But if they have a four-foot fence, they have to have a five-foot fence. Which is, we're agreeing with four-foot. Even though national is four, we're saying we want five. I think we ought to maintain at least a five-foot fence. Either or. I think, uh, the definition of fences addresses that.
And growing up on the island, I think Mr. Patterson will attest to this. How many pools did you jump in? I did a lot.
I was drunk. I don't remember.
When the board went to Monaco, we did them all.
And did you, did you die? Jim, is this the only change this one, this page? Oh, okay. I thought we had to go over it.
Technically, you're supposed to put out the whole words that you're referencing.
The only thing we've changed on here is we took out the word detached. Detached, and we're going to add obstruction to section K.
So do we have to take a vote on this?
Yes, this is going to be a recommendation to the commissioners as a, I don't know, minor modification. They could do it without changing it. It's a mechanical ordinance change. It's a mechanical ordinance change. Yes. Literally, pool equipment, mechanical ordinance. Literally, pool equipment, mechanical ordinance.
I also think in your committee, we gotta talk about these first act parts.
We will, but we wanted to get this swimming pool thing done tonight.
Yeah.
So let's, let's finish this and- That's, that's on our agenda at some point. So I would like to hear a motion to approve these changes as changed.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I think motion, we adjourn.
Anything else to discuss? This was really my main concern for tonight.
No, that was it.
Is there a second adjournment?
Do I? Is she out there?
I said I would adjourn. That's not adjourned. I'm just tougher than anyone.
I am. I am transited.
I did. I did.
I just, I'm numbering what I discussed.
What is this one?
I don't remember doing it.
This is what you're doing to your wife.
When she was jumping up the speaker, I said, sit down, wait. I see.
What's your eye on, the planning board? Who takes over now?
Till the left, do you pick the rope?
You do the president.
Is this coming down?
Where do you go sit?
Well, I understand, but there's a fine line between subcommittee being, like, submitting stuff out. No, 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 this is why we discuss it. There's an issue.
For that comment, everybody, except for the second time, everybody that got up a second time said the same thing, but everybody had a different point.
I got, I got my point.
They did their point some.
Very important.
They stood up and said the same kind of thing they said.